...of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health. Providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank. Visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College. Providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family. The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services. Cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank. Located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield. Replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisc Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Good evening. All right. Welcome to the 181st regular meeting of the Greenfield Town Council. I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 7:02. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcast. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me at this time. Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
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 Present.
All present. And, right now, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and this is voluntary.
The Pledge of Allegiance unified of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, infinite and endless.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to waive the rules of procedure?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of waiving the rules of procedure, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, the rules of procedure have been waived. And what that means is that we're not gonna follow our regular order of business tonight. And, the first thing we're going to do is invite our junior counselors up to take our seats, because you're going to be debating your motion. And so, we're going to leave our seats, and they're going to take 'em. And so, these are our high school students who have been studying for over a month. And, please, give 'em a round of applause when they're done. Well, you can do it now. Yeah, or before they begin. Junior counselors, if you want to be heard, make sure you press the button on your microphone. If the green light's on, that means people can hear you. If it's not, no one can hear you. I call this meeting of the junior town counselors to order at 7:05 PM, at Greenfield High School. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcasted. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairsperson at this time. Seeing none, can we call roll?
Precinct 1 Junior Counselor Anthony Bohannon.
Here.
Precinct 2 Junior Counselor Lexi Rauel.
Here.
Precinct 3 Junior Counselor Wyatt Clark.
Here.
Precinct 4 Junior Counselor Willow Scappas.
Here.
Precinct 5 Junior Counselor Tabitha Caloon.
Here.
Precinct 6 Junior Counselor Jacob Frank. Precinct 7 Junior Counselor Iggy Pisigliano.
Here.
Precinct...I'm sorry, that's 7. Precinct 8 Junior Counselor Gracelyn Tada.
Here.
Precinct 9 Junior Counselor Eden Swansea.
Here.
At Large Counselor Eli Stathis.
Here.
At Large Counselor Dylan Bedillo.
Here.
At Large Junior Vice President Angela George. Angelina George. At Large President Ella McDaniel.
Here.
All members are present, you have a call.
Counselor Bedio, can you read the ordinance that we're going to be discussing?
The Student Town Council moved that be ordered, that the Greenfield Student Town Council votes to approve the mayor's proposed fiscal year 2019 operating budget, police department salary and wage line of $3,275,556.
Okay, we're going to open up the floor to... Can I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Great. Now, we're going to open up the floor to discussion. Any council members? Okay. Counselor Bedio, you have the floor.
Well, I'm just gonna start off saying heavily against this budget, and feel like it should be deducted by approximately $214,000. Not sure where that number came from, but, y'all know. Because, it just kind of, as someone who has had personal experience, like, needing to go to the school officer, resource officer Brooks for legal procedures and having him help, yeah, he was just, he was more than enough help, and easily accessible. And additionally, the climate of our school is not changed by having more guns and more police officers in our school. That will only create more fear and tension. In the past couple of years, the number of fights in our schools has, like, declined drastically, and that wasn't from the school resource officer addition. So, why would that help now? I personally believe it was from a shift in power, from more of a iron grip, to a, like, leading with love, and which has spread throughout the school. And, it's just, as someone who was here four years ago to now, like, there used to be not a month without a fight in the school, and now, I don't remember one this year, like, which is astonishing, and there's been so much progress that this money should not be spent on just more police officers in the school. That's just, it kind of baffles me that we would even think about this. It's, uh, just, other states might need this. Other schools, Greenfield has a good enough climate where this is just preposterous, and this money could be better used in so many other places. And, like, hearing all of the school cuts that have been made, and all of the teachers that could be getting fired, it just makes me really sad to think some of my favorite teachers, I might not be able to see for my senior year, or might not be able to enroll in their classes. So, just, please hear us, well, hear me out, in saying that this money is better used somewhere else, and just, could be used to just influence the lives of many students, and not scare them.
Is that an amendment?
A what?
Are you motioning to amend this ordinance?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
With a deduction of $214,000 to the budget.
Anyone second that motion?
I second it.
Okay.
Think it works now. I second it.
Okay. Now, we're going to have a debate on the motion. Any counselors want to discuss that? I recognize Counselor Tata.
I motion to use the budget of that amount that is putting into the two new resource officers, because I feel that they can reduce crime and drug abuse violence, and they can all continue to have a safe school community, and they can teach law-related education to students and staff, so that the students and staff can have a better view on and connection to the officers. And, students and their parents can open up to the officers if they have issues at home, so that the student at school can continue to work productively and not be harmed by what is going on at home. And I feel like, in past years, we've had some fights that have broken out, and I feel that if we have more, then they can help to make fights break up more easily, and that's so other students don't get involved. And, if property damage happens to the building, they can help it so that it doesn't happen as much. And, if there is a crisis on the campus, and like, they need first responders right away, they'll be able to get to it more quickly than if they were to call 911. So, thank you.
Yes, I recognize Counselor Caloon.
Um, I disagree with you, because, in the high school, usually, there is no more than one fight a day. That's what's always been happening. And, um, yeah. And, it's usually Officer Brooks who takes care of that. And, I think we only need one additional resource officer, because if we have one at the high school, and then, one to take care of the elementary and middle school, I think that would be enough, because I'm pretty sure there aren't any, there aren't a lot of fights happening in those regions. I think that two resource officers are enough for us.
I recognize Counselor Rauel.
Personally, I believe that the proposed budget should stand, because not only would it improve the school climate, it would also take into account the different safety issues that would happen outside of student life. Having the two extra resource officers would make Officer Brooks' life so much easier, because if, say, a fight broke out in one school, and another situation happened in one of the elementary schools and the middle school, for instance, it would be very difficult for Officer Brooks to deal with both situations. And having the two additional resource officers would continue to improve and diffuse the situation that may occur. And, as well as having the officers trained, it would also bring much-needed improvement to cruisers that would be fitted and installed with resources that a school resource officer may need. It would include, it would make, it would include, like, it would begin to change computers, it would have newer cruisers, and the training that the officers would need would further improve not only them as school resource officers, but them as patrol officers, them as officers who will benefit not only the public safety of the school, but the public safety of the town.
Any counselors who haven't spoken yet, just before I go back? I recognize Counselor Swansea.
Swansea?
Yeah. Um, well, I talked to some of my classmates today about, um, I talked to some of my classmates today about this issue, and, um, they did say, in relation to the climate at our school, that resource officers can actually make it worse. It can be a bit more tense, especially with, when they're all in, like, their police gear, and they have weapons, it feels a bit like they're paroling the school, and that can be a bit uncomfortable for some students, but they do appreciate, um, having them as resources, as, um, like, connections to a police officer, in case you need that, for, like, personal problems or whatever. Um, but, one thing that they would prefer is, like, yes, maybe more officers, but less weapons on them, um, and, I don't know, less, like, formal police gear on, kind of. So, that's also something to consider.
Any other counselors? I recognize Counselor Scappas.
Personally, I believe that if we do have other officers, that they should only be in the middle school. I feel like an officer in the elementary school will put kids in this uncomfortable position, thinking that it's unsafe to be going to school. And as someone who has a younger sibling in the elementary schools, I do not want him growing up thinking that school is a harmful place to be, so this is a place of learning and safety. So, if we have one in middle school, I feel like that'd be better than having one in the elementary schools as well. And, if we reduce the budget for amount that we're gonna get for resource officers, we can use, hopefully use that budget for our teachers. I know teachers have spoken to me about wanting to have more resources in our schools, such as textbooks and other ways to help them teach, along with having more aides in our classrooms if needed, so, yeah.
Any counselors? Counselor Clark?
Okay, so, um, I've done a little bit of a survey, of, a very small survey, around 10 to 20 people. It seems to be the majority of the opinion that most people don't want this, um, and if people don't want this, there's usually a reason. Most of the teachers didn't want this, and some of the reasons I heard was because, um, it would, you know, cost money. They might lose their jobs, they, I mean, to be fair, we should probably invest this in textbooks. We are a school after all, we're not a police state, where, um, I mean, if you go to health classrooms, the state of the textbooks are atrocious, and, um, I mean, that's just one example. We, I mean, on the roof, we were originally planning, um, I know the Science Wing was planning to have an on-roof garden, or something like that, but we can't do it, because we don't have enough money, or so, that's what I've heard, at least. And the students don't want to do it, because, um, they feel like it just promotes an atmosphere of, oh, that's dangerous. And, um, overall, I think I'll have to agree that we should reduce the budget by $214,000. And, that's all I have to say, I guess.
Any other counselors wish to speak on this topic, in this debate? Okay, so, seeing none, I'm going to ask for a vote on this amendment. So, a yes vote is you do want to cut the $214,000 from the police budget, and a no vote is you want to leave it in.
Junior Counselor Bohannon.
I can choose to abstain, right? Alright, at this time, I'd like to abstain.
Junior Counselor Rauel.
I vote no.
Junior Counselor Clark.
I vote yes.
Junior Counselor Scappas.
I vote yes.
Junior Counselor Caloon.
I vote yes.
Junior Counselor Frank.
I vote yes.
Junior Counselor Pisigliano.
I vote no.
Junior Counselor Tada.
I vote no.
Junior Counselor Swazi.
I abstain.
Junior Counselor Stathis.
I vote no.
Vice President George.
I vote yes.
Junior Counselor Bedillo.
I forget which one's which, but I vote for the cut.
That would be a yes vote.
So, the amendment carries, and now, we are going to have a debate on the amended ordinance, which is the full amount minus the $214,000, which adds up to 6 million and...3 million, not 6 million, $3,061,556 to the police budget. Counselors have the floor. I recognize Counselor Bedio.
So, hearing what the other counselors had to say, I just have a couple responses to things that they have mentioned. I believe it was Counselor Tada who mentioned that they could break up fights more easily, but that shouldn't be what we're focusing on. We should be focusing on preventing fights, not breaking them up when they're happening. We shouldn't strive for, oh, we can break up a fight in two seconds, we should strive for we haven't had a fight all year. That's the big difference that needs to be focused on, and that is something that a school's resource officer just simply can't provide. Additionally, people are saying that school resource officers would make the school a safer climate, and will give better training, but, to teachers and everyone, but what evidence is there to support this? What evidence is there to support that Officer Brooks has been overstretched? Because I needed him intensely in the fall, and he was there every step of the way, easily, easy to access, and there was no problem whatsoever. So, as someone who's got a personal testimony with it, he was enough, and, and with him going on to the other schools, like, I haven't heard of a fight happening at the middle school, don't know why they need a school's resource officer. Their, school resource officers don't affect anyone's drug uses in the school, because as what, as a student, what I've heard, if you're doing drugs, you're doing it outside of school, and not inside of school, so, how would that affect us? And these resource officers are talking about mainly for the schools, and they don't really have an effect on the community either, so, just, I lost my train of thought.
Just so all the counselors know, what we are debating is the amended ordinance, voting, deciding whether or not to, um, order this ordinance. The rest of the money for the police department. Um, any counselors wish to discuss this? I recognize Counselor Clark.
I have to agree with my fellow counselor. I definitely think we should be trying to prevent, rather than say, oh yeah, we can deal with it if it does happen. Because if we prevent it, then the harm wouldn't happen in the first place. It's sad, the climate in our country that provokes this, that makes it, so this is an issue, and it really is sad, and something that we should try to correct. Personally, I don't think this school is, um, big enough, um, to be honest, for it to be an issue that we should have more than one officer, or at least two, in the whole district. And, that is all I have to say, on, at this point.
Great. Any more counselors? I recognize Counselor Stathis.
Uh, I'm a little bit confused. I thought we were past discussing whether or not we should have more resource officers.
We are discussing the amended police budget, minus the $214,000, whether or not we should pass that.
So, why are we still discussing? Huh?
I acknowledge your point of order. You are correct. Let's move on. Not in a mean way. Do you wish to say anything else? Any other counselors? I recognize Counselor Rauel.
Okay, so, with the budget, minus the $214,000 that would go to the school resource officers, that, that money is going to be used to continue to improve the police department, to improve police education, to improve training, and as someone who has family that are part of the Greenfield Police Department, I see how, I've seen firsthand what goes on day-to-day in the police department. I've seen that, like, at this time, cruisers need to be upgraded, for sure. Cruisers, the cruisers that are up to date now, they have been functioning great, but there are cruisers from the past few years that have become outdated, and have definitely become a lot less productive, and police officers have started to use them less, which makes it more difficult for police officers to be scheduled during their shifts, and that would lead to, on occasion, police officers sharing a cruiser, when there are multiple cruisers at the police station that are no longer in use. Another thing that would be equally as important, even if this budget is minus the $214,000, would be to increase training. A lot of officers in the Greenfield Police Department are new, they have just finished the police academy, and they don't have the same training as many of the veteran police officers. Having more training, having more ways for the police officers to learn different procedures, different situations, would continue to improve not only the police department internally, but would also improve the town climate. That it all.
Um, any other counselors who wish to speak on this? Counselor Tata?
When Counselor Bedillo and Counselor Wyatt were speaking, I do agree, like, of the part of preventing these things from happening, but like, if, say, there is somebody that has, like, a drug issue, or like, is dealing with, like, maybe, like, taking something they shouldn't be, the officer can, like, prevent them from even, like, taking even more, or like, making it, so they, like, stop it completely. Like, I agree with what you're saying, like, that it shouldn't happen in the first place, and we should prevent it, but, I feel like, they can help with somebody who does.
Any other counselors? Counselor Bohannon? No?
I'd just like to clarify, so, this money that we would be allocating specifically to, to the police department's budget, what, where is that coming from? Out of, out of what money are we allocating that from? And also, as a clarifying question, we, just once more, we are talking about this, we are, this discussion is to see whether or not we are allocating that money specifically to the police department, yeah?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, thank you.
The money comes from property taxes. Any other counselors wish to speak on this? Uh, Counselor Swazi?
Um, is there another option other than an all or nothing? Because it seems a little bit like, either we give all this money, or we don't give any of it, like, but I mean, I feel like, um, kind of like, to try and represent a bit of the mix that I got from at school today, hearing what some of my fellow students had to say, was often, like, we want a resource officer, we don't maybe need as many as we're planning to, like, um, take on, and, um, probably not anymore at the high school, but maybe another one, like, that's been suggested before, just at the middle school. And, um, having them more, less like a, a person to, like, parole the school with a bunch of weapons, and more of, like, um, just a resource for people to go to if they need that sort of help. Um, so, I know, I guess I'm wondering if there's, like, an in-between option, kind of.
You can make a motion to increase the amount of money. Would you like to do so?
Can you explain more?
Sorry?
Can you explain more? Increase what? Like?
If you can make an amendment to increase the amount of money that we are deciding to give to the police budget. And just so you know, $107,000 would be half, so one resource officer, and then the 214 would be two.
Okay, then I motion to, I guess, decrease the amount we'd be deducting, the 214, to 170, is that what you said?
So you want to add... You're making a motion to add $107,000 back into the budget?
Yes.
Is anyone going to second that? Second?
Uh, third.
Okay, great. You're going to have a roll call vote on this? A yes vote is to go from one school resource officer to two, and a no vote is to stay at the one that we already have.
Junior Counselor Bohannon?
Yes.
Junior Counselor Raul?
Yes.
Junior Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Well, yes.
Junior Counselor Scappas?
Yes.
Junior Counselor Caloon?
Yes.
Junior Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Junior Counselor Basiglià?
Yes.
Junior Counselor Tada?
Yes.
Junior Counselor Swazi?
I abstain.
Junior Counselor Stathis?
Yes.
Vice President George?
I abstain.
Junior Counselor Bedillo?
No.
It passes, and so now we are going to be debating the police budget with one additional resource officer. Whether or not we should pass this is what we are debating. Any counselors wish to speak on this? All in favor? Say aye. Say aye louder.
Aye!
All opposed? All abstained?
Aye.
The budget passes at $3,168,556. Motion to adjourn. Second? Great. Our meeting is adjourned. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed? All abstained? Okay, great.
They did good. They needed more information, but I liked it. They just needed somebody up here that was going to say, like, no. Because you know how so many of them talk about no, but they want one in the middle school, so they didn't know if they could have made an amendment to cover one. I know, I wanted to, like, I wish we could have sat with them and go, "So you want to make an amendment so we could have two?"
And they kept my seat warm.
They did really good. A little bit more information, just giving them that, like, okay, this is the price for two would have helped them out, because that's... And I love it when they were just like, "Why did he stuck this person in?" He was dead on, like, they should not have been, you know? And then when he adds a cliche at the end, "Perfect." Yeah, too bad we didn't have a thing beforehand so they could have asked. They were great, and he just liked some information. The thing I didn't like is, like, we took some pictures. We didn't... We don't want the building to...
Thank you, junior counselors. How fabulous was that? That was really excellent. Thank you, everybody who was involved in the project, and especially Mrs. Mass and Mr. Mass. Definitely Mrs. Mass. All right, we don't have any town council meeting minutes to approve, so we're going to go right into the public comment, and I'll remind everybody that it is three minutes. And we ask that you have already probably signed up there, and I also ask if somebody could bring me to sign up so that I could call you out. Looks like the mayor's going to do that. Sure. Thank you, Mayor Martin.
This is just the public hearing. Who did you ever sign up for that?
I know. No. Thank you. I'll sign up for you. Sarah Ahern. And please, for the record, state your address.
Sarah Ahern, 85 Crescent Street. Greeting town counselors. Today I am speaking to you today as a woman in long-term dual recovery, which means for me, I'm in recovery from substance use disorder and a mental health condition for greater than three years. Openly declaring being in recovery in this society comes with risk and fear. Why, you say? I can answer that in one word: stigma. Stigma is defined as a mark of disgrace associated with particular circumstance, quality of person. In the recovery world, it is defined as a strong lack of respect, of disrespect, for a person or a group of people, or a bad opinion of them because they have done something society doesn't approve of. In this moment in time, during the worst drug epidemic this nation has ever seen, with the 174 beautiful lives lost to unintentional drug overdose, including two of my own, this is simply unacceptable and dangerous. Recovery Movement leader William White says this about the dangers of stigma. As an object of shame, stigma feeds into the forces of isolation and denial that pushes people deeper into the addictive process and farther away from a medical response to addiction and toward what might seem like an easy answer, simply punishing its symptoms. All this adds up to many people who need help are not getting it, even though we have both the technology to treat addiction and a full range of mutual help networks to support ongoing recovery. Stigma tells me I can't talk about my recovery because it makes someone else feel uncomfortable. Stigma tells me I'm not trustworthy. Stigma tells me I'm unemployable. Stigma tells me I'm not worthy. But the biggest impact stigma has is our choice of language or the words we choose to use, words hurt and often do. Terms like junkie, addict, clean, crazy are often used in reference to individuals like me, and are not only hurtful, but stigmatizing language is still identified as the biggest barrier for someone struggling to access the vital help they need, which can result in death. The important conversation regarding language is not just a local one, but it's a national one, and individuals in recovery or recovery advocates have created a movement of millions to lead and further this conversation at all levels, to inform, educate, and include everyone in the conversation. Change happens slowly, but with persistence and perseverance, we will create a new norm. In the recovery world, we use person-centered or person-first language. I am not my disease, I am a human being with substance use disorder. Using hurtful language can only negatively impact the way society perceives substance use disorder and the people impacted by it, but most importantly, it can affect how individuals think about themselves and their own capacity to change. Language can promote stigma. Many of you know I'm a woman of many words, but you also know I'm a doer, so I'm going to request respectfully, all of you take a concrete action step with me today to break stigma in an open and transparent way. I would like all of you to take the anti-stigma pledge that clearly states, "I believe that words I use in talking about substance use disorder are important..."
You could just wrap it up now, sir.
Thank you. "...and reducing stigma. I pledge to treat all people with substance use disorder with dignity and respect. I pledge to talk about addiction as a chronic illness and not a moral failing. I pledge to be a leader in reducing stigma and promoting recovery from this disease." I have brought the pledges with me, and I would like permission to pass them out to the town counselors.
Permission granted.
Thank you, President.
Thank you. Susan Worgaftik.
Good evening. My name is Susan Worgaftik. I live at 45 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. I am here representing the Single Payer Task Force of the Franklin County Continuing the Political Revolution, and what we are looking at is, I hope you all have a copy of this, I dropped one off. This is our... There will be on the ballot this fall a non-binding referendum on single payer healthcare, and we're hoping that all of you will consider supporting this. The reason I'm here at the town council about this is because this is going to save the town money if it passes. About a year ago, several of us went to talk with Laine Kelly just before she retired and went through the numbers with her. During the present fiscal year, the town of Greenfield would have saved $4.5 million if single payer healthcare, under the plan that is in this document, was available. So that changes the calculus. It changes the calculus for the state in terms of what the state can give to towns and cities. It also changes the calculus of what our tax dollars locally can bring. Just to give you one other idea, Pioneer Valley Regional School District would save $1 million, and considering the straits that they are in right now, that would be a big help to them. At this time, the towns of Leverett, Deerfield, Shelburne, Colrain, Lydon, and Wendell have all voted to support this resolution based on what would benefit the town. So while we're not asking you for a resolution right now to support this, we hope that you will consider this and think about this in relation to what this could mean for the town budget and for the town overall. We think this is a major way to be able to change the calculus in the town without having to raise taxes. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul Jablon?
Hi, good evening. Paul Jablon. I live at 73A Fairview Street here in Greenfield. I will be brief. You've heard me speak about the school resource officers and how at this point I think it is not a utilitarian thing to do, but you will be voting on a school budget next week. And I would suggest two things, that you move the money from the school resource officer over, as well as the other $300,000 that the school committee has asked. I wish you could move the $800,000 back into the school budget, but at least the $400,000, you say, "Well, that's half." But if you really look at what the schools have lost over the last three years, it's about $1.5 million. So to put $300,000 back in is not really that higher percentage. We are talking about an expected 6% increase in students for next year, and for a higher percentage of second language and special ed students. So without this additional $400,000, we are going to be in extremely, extremely dire straits in our school system. So I urge you, urge you, to please replace that money.
Thank you. Carol Letson?
Hello. I live at 29 Allen Street, Precinct 3, and I am very pleased to be able to speak to the council tonight. I am a member of Not in Our Town Greenfield, which is the local chapter of a national organization, anti-bullying and anti-hate in our town. And tonight you're going to be discussing a resolution that was brought forward through the CRE Committee to your discussion tonight, and I'm hoping that you will all be glad to pass that resolution. I'm just going to read a little bit of that so that the audience can hear it. "We have been collecting signatures for this resolution for several months already. We feel that it's time to bring it to the town council, because then you, as town counselors and our representatives, can show your interest in also furthering the resolution, the focus of the resolution. Whereas, while we protect free speech, we believe with free speech comes responsibility. And whereas, we call upon all people in the Greenfield community to commit to not using hate speech, including racist slurs, homophobic name-calling, sexist catcalls, and other forms of personal degradation. And whereas, free speech is not a license to demean other members of our community, to threaten the safety of individuals and the security of the community as a whole. And whereas, if we witness such incidents, we will remember that the responsibility for a respectful and civilized community falls upon each one of us." If the town council endorses and adopts this resolution, we know, in NIAOT, we know that the community-wide awareness of your intentions will encourage a healthy community spirit and more dialogues in support of a culture of civility in Greenfield. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight. I know you're... It's item number 10 on the agenda, so keep up the good work. Keep up the momentum. You'll get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Doug Selwyn?
Good evening. I'm Doug Selwyn, 38 Forest Avenue in Greenfield. I have two items that are closely linked. I'm urging you to reject the proposal to have two additional SRO officers in the school and to use that money instead to restore as much of the school budget as you can. As Paul mentioned a couple of speakers ago, the district is constantly falling behind if it spends the same amount of money it spent the year before because... if it spends the same amount of money it spent the year before, because things cost more. And the expense of educating English language learners, students with special needs, et cetera, keeps going up. And if the budget stays constant, that means the district is not able to offer what they could the year before. When the budget is cut, as it's, the proposal is to cut this year, it will fall even farther behind. And in addition to that being, I would say, not a wise choice in terms of serving the kids, it also is a bad economic move. I mean, one of the reasons that people move to a place is because they have good schools. And if you keep undercutting the schools, if you keep limiting what the schools can offer, that makes it less attractive to families, so they don't come here. It makes it less attractive to businesses, so businesses don't come here, which cuts the tax base. So it seems to me a short-sighted move that does not serve anyone, quite frankly. The Center for Disease Control has papers out on school violence prevention, and frankly, having additional officers in the school does not reduce violence. It does not make people feel safer. It sounds, it sounds good, and it's a sort of a quick response to the violence we've seen in schools, but it doesn't work. What does work are violence prevention programs, is having more councilors and family support workers, and people who can bring community together. And that would be money better spent. The students who testified here last month talked about the fact that they felt physically safe. They feel emotionally more at risk. And the people who can help them feel safer and to bring the community together are people who have more experience in that area, which would be councilors and family support workers. I have here the requirements, the minimum requirements that Massachusetts has for school resource officers, the training they get. It's a 40-hour training, and the long list they cover in 40 hours, I'd use up my entire three minutes to read the list to you. What it means is they're getting way too little training on way too many things, which means they're not going to be prepared to deal with actually working with the children. And so, again, I would argue that they are not the best solution. We all want safer schools, but the way to get there is to fully fund the schools as close as you can, and to use that money for people who are working with the kids in relationship building ways. Thank you.
Thank you. David Moscaratello.
43 Country Club Road. Somebody I was talking to with the other day, I think was joking around when they called me the Grinch of Greenfield. And I think they were just talking and referencing that I get up here and I talk about a lot of details. And I'm really a pretty positive person, and I'm a real caring person, and that's why I come up here and speak, because I'm concerned about our town. I love our town, and I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And I'm a finance person, so I key and look at finance. I want GSET to be successful. I think it's a great program. I think John has done a great job turning it around, but I think it has a big hill to climb and some challenges. That's why I asked the questions that I did get answers to. They're public. I don't have copies. If you'd like me to give you copies, I can send them to the town, but they are public. And John did answer the questions. I don't know if I'm satisfied with all the answers, but I appreciate it. But what really bothers me sometimes is when I hear statements like, "GSET's my pet project", and I can't tell you that we're not going to come back two or three times referencing more financing. I don't think that's an acceptable statement. I don't think it's professional, and you wouldn't get any extra money out of a bank if you went to a bank and made that statement. So these are the statements that bother me. There was a couple of things mentioned last council meeting. One of the councilors mentioned that they wish that John didn't have to get up and make a report because it made a negative portrayal of GSET. I don't want GSET to have a negative image, but I think it's really important that an enterprise fund, and John do come up here and give the council details. And I think he should give you more financial details. It doesn't have to be public. It can be in writing, but I think it's really important for John to get up here every month and give you councilor's details. There was also a reference about if any public money was spent on GSET, and the answer was no, and I disagree with that. Yes, I am wrong at times, and I love to get corrected, and I love to get information, but I've asked a lot of questions about what the enterprise fund is all about. And the answers I got were, "The enterprise fund is made up of predicted revenue, grant money, and projected sales." So in my mind, it doesn't sound like there's a lot of cash in the account. So when I think of that, my second question is, how much of the $5 million is left? And there's only $95,000 of the $5 million. So the support has to come from somewhere. It comes from the enterprise fund. That's the answer I get. But really, isn't that money that the enterprise fund is borrowing from the town, which is public money?
David, you, um...
I got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rachel Silverman.
Thank you. I'm Rachel Silverman from 33 Norwood Street. I'm also here to comment tonight on the proposal to increase school resource officers at the high school. In my own family, we've had some experiences with school resource officers and the excessive use of policing in this school. And although I would love to embrace the ideal that we can use school resource officers to create community relationships and do the type of important work that needs to happen for us to have kids and our police forging positive relationships, unfortunately, the data does not bear out to support that being the case. And in fact, what many families might regard as a school safety measure is actually a school danger to other families, particularly families with kids of color, kids who have special education diagnoses, and children who live in poverty. These children are much more likely to be policed for behaviors that are sort of normal adolescent behaviors, and at a rate much higher than white students. And it also is the case that once a student has contact with the criminal justice system, they're two times as likely to have contact, a subsequent contact with the criminal justice system. This is known as the school-to-prison pipeline. There's a lot of data out there that you can look at, studies done by the government, studies done by the ACLU. And it's well researched and supported. I also agree that our schools are what makes our city great, or they should. Currently, this town is sending a check to another school district to educate my child, and sadly, that will probably continue to be the case for the rest of his educational career, because I don't feel safe sending my child to this school system because of the lack of accountability, particularly around the use of school resource officers. Who tracks data for interventions, police interventions with students? How do we know that students of color, students with special education diagnoses, kids with English as a second language, kids who live in poverty, how do we know that they are not being disproportionately policed? Who is responsible for tracking that data? How can it be audited? How can we know? And as a member of the public, and I ask you as my representatives, to please ensure that if we are to increase the presence of police officers in our schools, that there is language written that explicitly prohibits the use of arrest for managing behaviors, and that there is an auditable system of tracking demographic issues in relationship to interventions with the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Susan Hollins.
Susan Hollins, Francis Street. I'm a member of the school committee, but I'm here just speaking for myself. Regarding the school district's FY19 budget, we, the school committee, there's about an $830,000 gap between what the school committee voted after reviewing the superintendent's draft budget and cutting over a million dollars from that. What I'd like to say about that is about $350,000 of our FY19 budget are intractable personnel costs, union-negotiated salary increases. About 80% of every school district budget is personnel typically, and the rest is mostly contracted costs that can't be changed. And the reason for that is we're working with minors, and the most important duty of a school district is duty of care, to make sure everyone is safe. That requires a lot of personnel with young children. About 3% to 4% of school district budgets are discretionary, and that's when you get into textbooks and supplies. Without that, the school district doesn't make sense. The budget subcommittee is carefully reviewing all the details of budget. I sit on that committee, and as of our last meeting, we had made some good project, progress making up the gap, but we're still about $350,000 to $400,000 short. With that, I'd like to say anything the city council can do to help us fill in would be appreciated, because we have a tremendous amount of statutory obligations, and it's just really difficult to meet those obligations without the people that go with it. I think we were fairly prudent in putting a budget together. But a couple of quick points. We requested a couple of safety improvements, what I consider safety improvements for our school district, that were not included in capital. They were each about $25,000. I hope we will be funded for these somehow. One is repairing fencing around elementary schools, which seems to me extremely important that our borders are protected, since no one's allowed on school grounds except school personnel during school hours. And the other is to rekey our buildings so that we get away from using keys, because it's too easy for people to make copies of keys. There's no way to control for that. Earlier today, there was a Ways and Means Subcommittee, a committee meeting, and there was a discussion about a $150,000 suggestion by the mayor to transfer into special ed stabilization. This is the most unpredictable account. It can swing a half a million dollars in any direction, having nothing to do to us by students we don't even, we can't even remember who slept here for one night, being assigned to us for payment. And the mayor's suggestion to include a stabilization transfer is really wise. I hope he won't put off that transfer vote, because we're dependent on that in figuring out our budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan. Paul DiMarco.
Good evening. My name is Paul DiMarco. I'm with the Massachusetts Teachers Association. With me is Kim Hurley. She's representative of the Greenfield Education Association. She's here to hold my hand because I'm shy. But I wanted to talk to you and ask you, please, not to rubber stamp the mayor's budget this year. The cuts to the schools are dramatic. Last year, the city council cut 1%. That meant that about a $500 per capita spending by the city was cut from the students' budgets, from each student. This year, if the mayor's budget passes because of the increasing enrollment, you'll see another $500 per capita cut to the students', per student's spending by the city. There are two places where I think the city can, the town council can find the money to support the school committee's recommendation, and one is on, one is to take the school resource officer money back and put it back into the schools, which is $114,000, as you know. And the other is a, is a fund that's being created this year called the Snow and Ice Deficit Fund, and it's on page 25 of the budget book. It was zero for the past several years. It's more than one and one-third times the full budget for the snow and ice removal for next year. So it's just completely unnecessary. Using those two funds would get you up to the $400,000 with no problem. So we would urge the city council to please support the school's recommended budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. And now we're going to open the public hearing. Councilor Stempel. Okay. Come on up.
Hi, thanks. Thanks for letting me speak. I live at 45 Birch Street in Greenfield. I'm new to the town. I'm very happy to be here.
Could you tell us your name?
Natasha. Natasha Pika.
Natasha Pika.
So I'm also here to speak on the proposal, the two additional officers. And, you know, I'm an educator myself. I work as a para in Amherst, and I've seen that how much districts across the country and the state are pushing trauma and anxiety training for all of us. We have more and more students with trauma and anxiety in our schools. And so we could use the money to have serious, in-depth trainings for us, you know, in Greenfield, I'm not in Greenfield, but for educators in Greenfield, on de-escalation, and better yet, hiring councilors, you know, one or two councilors. And I've heard, you know, from folks that work in Greenfield in the education system, that the ELL program is in need of resources and support, and, you know, in particular for climate refugees, which will probably be getting more and more. The hurricanes all over the country, as well as in Puerto Rico, have brought more and more families with their young people here. And so additionally, you know, the police in schools across the country, and also in Massachusetts, have been used to deal with disciplinary issues. Someone else mentioned this, you know? And that's, that's not really the role of the police. It should be the students and administrators that are building these relationships with the kids. That can, as an educator, I know that that's the best way to avoid fights and avoid problems. So this also leads to arrests, and as someone else mentioned, and we know that who gets disproportionately targeted with arrest are kids of color. So the statistics bear this out. The ACLU talks about it. There are books and studies written about this. This is, this is a thing. The school-to-prison pipeline is real, and we should be taking it seriously. It causes real and sometimes irreparable harm to our youth of color. So, you know, I urge you, when the time comes, to vote on this, to move the money that would be allotted to the two officers into, you know, much more needed resources for our schools, including councilors and the ELL program, as well as special ed. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilor Stempel, will you please read the public hearing?
I am so happy to. Public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield Town Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 16, 2018, at 7:00 PM at Greenfield High School Cafeteria, 21 Bar Avenue, to receive public input on the following. Appropriate $450,000 from precash to stabilization. The town council will consider the same on Wednesday, May 16, 2018, at 7:00 PM at Greenfield High School Cafeteria, 21 Bar Avenue. Materials can be obtained from the town clerk's office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, (413) 772-1555, extension 6163. Karen Renaud, Greenfield Town Council President.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing at 8:07. And Councilor Stempel, would you please read the second public hearing notice?
Town Council's second reading, May 16, 2018. Appropriate, should I just read the public hearing again or not? In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield Town Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 16, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Greenfield High School Cafeteria, 21 Bar Avenue, to receive public input on the following. Appropriate $450,000 from precash to stabilization. The town council will consider the same on Wednesday, May 16, 2018, at 7:00 PM at Greenfield High School Cafeteria, 21 Bar Avenue. Materials can be obtained from the town clerk's office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, (413) 772-1555, extension 6163. Karen Renaud, Greenfield Town Council President.
Thank you. Nobody has signed up for the public hearing portion, and that's the portion where you can just, you're only going to speak on the, this $450,000. So I'm going to keep the public hearing open on that for a little while. In the meantime, we're going to have reports from communications from the mayor, town officers, and employees.
Good evening, Madam President and councilors.
Good evening, Mayor Martin.
I know you have a busy evening scheduled, and I'm sure there are things that'll be unscheduled that'll keep us here a little later. unscheduled that'll keep us here a little later. Let me comment on a -- briefly on a couple of subjects. Let me congratulate the council for putting together that debate for the students in the school. It was outstanding exposure to the process by which their local government acts. As you know, several members of the school committee have been encouraging a course in civics and local history for -- since I've been mayor, I've been advocating for that. Hopefully, we'll -- the state legislature just failed to pass a civics course for the schools in the state. But we're hoping our school committee will act on that in the near future. You have before you this evening some charter amendment proposals. I did forward a legal opinion from our city attorney relating to the process for that. My issue is to be involved with all counselors, anyone who had initiated a proposal, or any committee that wants to discuss the perceptions from the -- and perspective of the executive side. You have another proposal this evening to vote on, the revolving funds. I hope you'll see that as a -- it is a new law, a change in the law. We did fail to bring it to you in February in the proper language. Hopefully, you'll review that this evening and pass that. You also have a local TIF that's coming before you this evening from Valley Steel Stamp. They've been before the TIF committee, they've been before the council, and their owner has been outspoken before the council in the past on some topics. A quick update on the TIFs. We have 12 active TIFs now. There have been two that have been decertified, and the 12 others that are active now, two are going to expire this year, and one already has. Two are going to expire in 2019, and two are going to expire in 2020. So basically, we have half of our TIFs out there in the last phase of completion, so that 100% of the improved real estate improvement of their businesses will take place with full 100% real estate taxes. So the continued strategy of using these TIFs, as apparently has been going on since the '80s, is a solid way to incentivize economic development, retain and create jobs, and expand the tax base. I know there's a lot of discussion on two subjects, and that's the school department budget and the SROs. Let me first speak to the school budget. At our last budget, I was on the school budget committee, the school committee budget subcommittee, and we had several meetings. I think I missed one over the past five months. There is -- we have found $469,000 in funds that can be appropriated to FY '19 budget. Some of it has to be used in the budget, some cannot be carried forward, of the $3.4 million that the school has in various funds and accounts. It's important to know that Greenfield is not shy about supporting the schools. There's been some mention that we've been stagnant in not providing enough money or level funding over the years. I've been mayor for seven and a half, eight years, and every year, there's been an increased value between 400 and to $800,000 applied to the school's budget. This year, there's been hardly any, maybe 160,000. But I do that because of revenue issues and because of the availability of funds from alternative sources. I hope the counselors will review that and consider the opportunities to utilize the entire asset and resources that the city has for all of its city budget. Greenfield provides $27 million to the school department. Our budget is 48.8. The balance comes from a number of benefits that are paid for by the city. The school choice program is 2.5 million, up from 300,000 in the past two and a half years. That is taken out of the cherry sheet, out of the town's money, the city's money, and because of choice out. The choice in, last year, was around 780,000, and this year, it's scheduled to be around 600,000. So that money goes direct to the school department. It doesn't come through the city. So using alternative sources of funding, as I recommended in my letter to the council and to the school committee and to the superintendent, I think is something we should seriously The taxpayers provide most of the money, but it comes from other sources, which are also other taxpayers. So whether it comes from the state in the form of grants, or the federal government in the form of grants, or in the tax levy of the town of Greenfield, which is around $23 million, then it's all taxpayer funds. And I think they have to be accounted for, for our departments, for our city budget, to make sure that services and programs exist on a continued basis, and that we maintain the quality of employees. I want to quickly jump to the SROs. It wasn't a reactionary issue when I suggested that we have two SROs. It was because we were -- we always knew we couldn't cover the scattered sites in Greenfield. Our scattered sites, as you all know, in different parts of town, has been a banner of sorts for this type of education, the neighborhood schools. And we've maintained it. We had a great debate in the early '90s, late '80s, and the town overwhelmingly wanted to be with the continued scattered sites and the neighborhood schools. And then we went through one renovation rehab, a large one then, and we just went through another one a couple of years ago. So all of our schools, roofs, boilers, heating, windows, all of those type of things that are going to carry us another three or four decades has been accomplished. The SROs are more than a cop, and I think we all realize that. And as someone mentioned earlier, to stigmatize or to continue perpetuate the stigma of a cop with a weapon is not the whole thing. There's more to it. We have community policing. Our officers are well-trained. They go to de-escalation classes. They go to psych classes. They work with safety issues. Our model for the Greenfield Police Department is engage. It isn't to wait outside behind a car. That's the difference between some of the models in the country. We also have the ability to not only de-escalate in a number of different ways, but to mediate, to bring in other people, to help families that are having difficulty. This is done outside of the school system anyways. So one minor correction. The SRO is $62,000 plus training and plus benefits and education. It comes to about $135,000 for two SROs, not $214,000 for two. There have been a number of studies on the benefits of having role model type of officers within the school system to help, to assist, and to be partners with administrators and students. Lastly, I just want to say that Dixon, Illinois, recently, they had a school problem. An active type of violent person who was not a student was neutralized and taken down by a resource officer. That's the extreme. We only have less than four minutes to act. We cannot get here to protect not only the students and facilitators in the school, educators and administrators, but other schools. So with three, we are able to provide evening coverage, scattered site coverage in the elementary schools and the middle school, and certainly Chief Hag would be able to give the more detailed operative procedures. So I guess my last comment is to Mr. DeMarco. His suggestion, as others have said, to move the SRO money from the police department to the schools is an idea. And my idea of keeping and creating two more SRO officers in the police department is another idea. Lastly, we have never had a zero snow and ice budget. I don't think we've ever had a zero winter. We had a good winter a couple of years ago. We returned $80,000 from that budget to the general fund. Right now, that budget, I think, is one to 20, right around 220,000. The law, Massachusetts law and Department of Revenue, says you cannot cut that budget by 10% any one year. So it would take us -- to get to zero would take us several decades. That money is not available to be transferred to the schools. And I think if we look closely, hopefully, the chairwoman of the school committee and the superintendent will address the availability of funds in the multiple accounts that the school has. There's been some mention by Dr. Hollins about the capital money not approved for fencing and key entry for all the different school sites. There were -- one was under 25,000. That was rejected, because it has to be 25,000 or more to be in capital. And number two, if the key process is serious and critical and a benefit to all within the school, then use part of that $3 million and get it done. I'll take any questions.
Vice President Ricketts.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of quick things. You brought up the charter amendments, and I'm wondering, are you saying you're not looking for us to be voting on this tonight, or are you?
I'm saying with your discussion, I would hope that you would plan on discussing it with the executive side, primarily the mayor, and get the views on whatever charter amendments are proposed. They don't go at the bottom of each of your charter amendments, and it goes vote from the council and goes to the legislature. Apparently, that's not the process, although I recall doing that in the past. The process is actually to have a support from the legislative side, the council and the executive side, the mayor, to propose the charter amendment to the AG, and then to the citizens for a vote.
Okay. So I guess we'll wait till we hit that later tonight. As far as the TIFs, you have a schedule of when some of them are coming off in the next few years?
Yes.
Do you think that we could get that schedule? I'm not sure if we have that one. I think the one I have is--
We had it in a subcommittee meeting, but I'll make -- I'll have it sent to all the counselors.
Okay. And then lastly, I got that from you, even though you said "lastly" four times.
Did I?
For GSET. Did you write the letter to council yet that stated that if any council member wanted to speak to GSET, they could go directly there? They didn't have to go through your office? I think we talked about that at chairs.
Yes. I didn't know if -- I thought we had an open door with GSET to get in touch with John Lunt, and I think he mentioned at the last council meeting, just call him. I think some counselors did, actually. Call him and go over and see what's going on. So if you need that in writing, no problem. I will do that. Two.
Thank you.
Counselor Mas.
Mayor Martin, first of all, let me thank you for raising the issue of the SROs, regardless of what this body does related to it. It's been an important community conversation, and that would not have happened without you putting it in the budget for discussion, so thank you. I do have two questions. One is about school safety, and you keyed on it. Your colleague, Dr. Hollins, indicated it seemed like a priority of the school department to -- or the school committee to have the key entry put in place. This body tabled the capital budget item related to -- for the schools, particularly involving the TRIM for North Parish School, which certainly seems less critical or least safety-oriented, with the hopes that you might have a conversation with the school committee and department and send an amendment substitute that might gain approval of the council. Is that something -- is there a conversation, or could there be conversation going on? Or should we plan on acting on that soon, knowing that there's not going to be a change coming forth?
Thank you for asking that question. Frankly, there's been some subtle conversation in subcommittee. The idea that -- it went through several months. The capital improvement committee goes through several months of reading and providing recommendations for all of the issues requested, topics requested by the departments. I have an obligation as -- not only as the mayor, but as a representative of the community to make sure that our assets always stay alive and well and maintain their value. The fencing, and the -- which I mentioned earlier, didn't reach the threshold of $25,000, and the key program did, but it did not have -- it seemed like it was such an emergency and critical that it should have been done prior before capital and certainly since capital. So to answer directly your question, I'm not going to revise the recommendation. There are several areas of the building, Four Corners and Green River and Federal Street, that need to be repaired, or we're going to look at a higher expense to repair them at a later date.
Thank you for your answer, Mayor. I think it's unfortunate that there's not forthcoming communication, especially where we're talking about North Parish School and TRIM, not any of those other matters. The other question I have was about fencing at Eunice Williams Bridge. That came as quite a surprise to me, that fencing that went up. And I think it went up as a surprise to the community, because there was no community dialogue about it. And I have no comment on the appropriateness of whether or not the decision that was made. But could you talk to us about how that decision was made, what the cost of the fencing was, where that money came from? Because I didn't know it was in any of the budgets, and I'm wondering where the money came from.
During last year, toward the middle and end of summer, we ran into a lot of issues at the pumping station, or Eunice Williams Bridge. There was graffiti on the wall and on the bridge, a lot of issues with complaints from neighbors for driving noise, fires, and so on. At that time, we decided to -- in the middle of summer, we had placed a number of trashcans around. Then we placed some boulders around, tried to cut down on the vehicle driving on the beach or toward the beach. For the end of the summer, we decided that the only way we can save that filter bed and to maintain some control over the reservoir, which is above the dam, is to continue with more signage, no parking on both sides, and fence. It was going to be done last year. I don't recall the source. We had the funds last year. We did an RFP, and we couldn't do it, because it was too late in the year. So it was to be done in the spring. I can get you that documentation tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that.
Counselor Python?
Thank you. Mayor Martin, I have a question about the property tax bills that went out. I guess I had a few people--
They were too low, right?
No. No. No, they went out, I guess, two in one. I guess what's -- it's not so much the bill being submitted late and then people paying their bill. It's the way the billing cycle happened, that people did pay their bills on time, but then they get the demand notice, the yellow slips of demand notice after they paid. Because I guess the way the billing is on the paper, there's the amount due on the bottom, but then up top, there's the second amount due. So you're getting two bills on one. So I guess people are a little bit nerve-struck and about the late fee that they're being charged and the percentage, feeling like, you know, if the bills got submitted late, why are the residents being penalized for their payments?
Well, the -- I wish I had spoken to the people that were just awestruck. I've spoken to a lot of people that are really pissed off, actually. And so they have moved to -- they have -- we are in the process of trying to correct that and reimburse anyone. I've been trying to meet with a treasurer for a couple of days now, and I'm sure that'll happen soon. There is a glitch in the printing from the Eunice to that particular type of bill. Obviously, no one should be getting a late fee for not paying their taxes in February when they didn't have a tax bill. And frankly, looking at mine, it doesn't make sense, the way it's staggered in the numbers, and then you come up with a -- we're used to adding the top three lines, and the fourth line is the sum, and somehow, it doesn't work in that system. fourth line is the sum, and somehow it doesn't work in that system. So thank you for bringing that up. I hope everyone who's listening or watching can know that we are going to work on that. We'll publicize the solution soon.
Councilor Dolan?
I have a follow-up question about the SRO issue.
Uh huh.
We've been talking about this for a few months on the council and in the community. And I feel like I still don't quite understand what the primary responsibility of this job is. Because obviously, the proposal coming out shortly after the Parkland incident was, didn't seem coincidental. And you just concluded your remarks by saying that this, one of this person's roles is to intervene in a violent situation. But when we talk about it in other contexts, it's portrayed very differently, where this person is a community policing presence and a role model and that kind of thing. So how would you describe the primary responsibility of this person? Is it security?
Yeah.
Or is it education and pedagogy?
That's a good question, Councilor Dolan. The real, the real issue is that it's both. It's security and safety. It provides a defensive response, protects and serves. Those are all slogans we've heard. But we also have heard of community policing. Oftentimes, community policing includes walking on the street and talking with the people who are on the street, or where there's a group of, where there's an established hangout, or to develop relationships with people that have more time on their hands. And so it's developing that relationship so that they always feel comfortable in going to the police. Let me startle you a little bit with the fact that I think we continue the stigma, the stereotype of the cop. So if we, if we don't allow cops because they scare me, that what is that? That's kind of hate language, maybe. You know, let's consider what we're doing with the police. They serve us. They live here. They, they're part of our school system. They're parents. Most of them have been through the Greenfield School System. There's a, there's a tie to the community. And by proclaiming them different and proclaiming them not welcome in our schools is really a kind of sleight of hand or a backdoor compliment, if you know what I mean.
So how would you respond to the two students of color who spoke at the last meeting, who voiced their fear of the police? Do you think that they are, their fears are ungrounded?
I'm a psychiatric nurse. We often run into people that are not with themselves. I would say that in those occasions, when I'm, when I was on the ward and in the admission psych ward, you work with people. They may be afraid of something else, but you sit with them and work with them and develop a relationship until they're calmed down and have developed a new frame of reference for the, what seems to be their senior anxiety or primary anxiety. For students, I would say maybe that, part of that's a good advice, you know, face the fear. If that is your fear, then go find out what it is. Go with someone else. Take, take three or four people and go see a policeman and sit down. Go to the police department and walk through the place. You know, do some type of, some type of recognition and reframing the situation. What would you say about my answer?
Councilor Dolan, do you want to answer that? It's up to you. Why don't we give Councilor Rickett, why don't we refer to the, defer to the Vice President?
Your answer was perfect, except for you began it talking about you were a psychiatric nurse. So you, it made it sound like those kids had a problem.
Oh.
That was the only problem.
Of course, I didn't mean that. I was trying to bring my experience into dealing with people.
Yeah, you just made those shivers go up my spine. So that was the problem. I, I understand what you're saying, because during that meeting, I was sitting here, and I was so upset with every adult, including our own police chief, for a moment that was in the audience, because I wish someone had made the connection to introduce those that were scared to a police officer. And it didn't occur to anyone, like a police, or the mayor, or school committee member, or anything. And I felt like, oh, I should have just gotten up, because it does keep going on, and it won't, they won't feel it. But we have to respect it and recognize, like, that's how they feel, but it's like, we as adults, what are we going to do about it? That's why I'm in the middle about the SROs, because we feel like, yes, we could get therapists or guidance councillors or someone else to help, but when we had a little instance like that in front of us, no one said anything. No one moved. And it's the words that have to be very careful. So your wording right then, room for pause, like, we can't, we can't make it seem like, when I was on a ward, this is what I did, because that's, that's not the problem. They don't have a problem. They just don't have the connection for whatever reason. So, this is as nice as I can say.
If I may follow up, I would just like to point out, I think it's, it's offensive to dismiss the perspectives of our students on this matter. And I think we have to recognize that we live in a society where people of color are treated very differently by the police. Maybe that doesn't happen here, and maybe it does. I have no way of knowing that. But I would just like to say that I would like to recognize the students who had the courage to come up here and talk about their fears and recognize that those fears might be valid.
Councilor Sun? And then Councilor Python?
Yes, as far as the SROs, for people to get to know them, if there is, you know, additions, I feel, and you probably feel the same way as I did, to get to know the students and the SRO officers, you have to go and talk to each other, you know, like friends. You can make friends with police officers as well as any student or any councillor on the, on the, sitting here at the table. That's what you need to do. You can't, you got to grow. You can't just stay in one, one place. You got to be willing to work with everything, because once you get out of, out in the world, everything isn't roses.
Councilor Python, you have a question for the mayor?
Yes. First of all, I appreciate the work that you do or have done, given your title as a psychiatric nurse. That's a, it's a hard job. I, you know, I, I just want to give you that for a moment. It's a hard thing, and I, Sarah Hearn was talking about it earlier. It's hard. So I appreciate that. But getting back to the students, back in the day, and I know we get away from things when we move on, things change, so forth, but back in the day, they used to offer like public safety assemblies where they would have a, you know, a police officer, a fire, a fireman, you know, somebody where they could, somebody would come into the schools and talk about their jobs and, and safety and, and all these things. I think back then, they, they offered it more than it's, what it's even offered now. I don't even know if it's offered now. But something like that that may, you know, mold the kids a little bit better, you know, comfortably toward, you know, public safety of any. So like I said, I don't know. I know they did that in the grade schools, middle schools. High school's a little bit tough, but if it, if it was offered as an assembly as a whole, that might be something to be considered.
I'll mention that to both chiefs and see if we can coordinate. I have been in several classrooms. The teachers will have a, what do you do for a living type of thing, and they'll bring in different parents, and I've been invited. I think it's, it's fun, and it's, it's exposure for the students to see the different vocations and the different people that are involved in them. Good idea.
Are there any other questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor Martin.
Thank you.
And GSET, we're going to hold off on you. We did, I think you probably know, I can tell you know already. So, and so now we're going to hear from the school, the school committee. I don't see the superintendent. I see the past superintendent.
Hi, everyone. I'd first like to just say thank you to all the student junior councillors who are here. I'm not sure if any of them are still here in the audience, but that was fantastic. And much appreciation to each of you as councillors, as mentors to them. And of course, both Councilor Mass and Angela Mass for the work that they're doing with those students. So thank you. And that was really, really fun to witness. Our report today is fairly brief. We do continue with our ongoing work on policy and contract negotiations and beyond. And we are also getting very excited about graduation and the end of school. It's just around the corner. What you have before you, I did send to the clerk today as well as the president. It was late in the afternoon, so a digital version may arrive in your inboxes in the next coming days. But it's highlighting, it's just a simple memo highlighting two important items that the school committee would like you to be aware of. The first is the FY19 budget. Last Wednesday during our school committee meeting, the school committee voted unanimously to support a motion requesting that the city council find and add an additional $400,000 to our budget. I'll go ahead and read this paragraph below so that members of the audience can also hear some of the rationale. The mayor's FY19 Greenfield Public Schools budget is 828,955 short of the school committee approved FY19 budget. In order to close the gap between the mayor's budget and the school committee budget, the superintendent and business management service have proposed that the district spend an additional $428,000 from a variety of revolving accounts. An additional $400,000 is needed to help balance the budget and offset potential cuts to staffing. Approximately 18 positions are at risk of being cut next year. The committee has not yet voted on amendments to the FY19 district budget. However, the group unanimously agreed that an additional $400,000 added to the budget for FY19 will provide much-needed support for our students. I will elaborate on this just a little bit in just a moment, but I'll read quickly also the second item on your memo, which is related to the school resource officers. The school committee did not take a vote on the school resource officer proposal. This was brought to the table twice at the full committee level, and it was discussed at least twice at the subcommittee level, I think possibly three times. The committee has reviewed and considered the proposal for two additional school resource officers at the full committee and subcommittee. No recommendation of the full committee has been voted. Deliberation on this topic has revealed an interest in careful review of the current school resource officer program and memorandum of understanding, and a desire for a thorough needs assessment to inform such a review. Among many items discussed at subcommittee, a need for a district truant officer or additional support in the area of student truancy has been noted. There are many things that came to the surface when we were having our deliberations related to the school resource officers. And I think that this paragraph here really just focuses on much of what came to the surface, was there were so many questions that were put forward by school committee members, and it was acknowledged more than once that there was not a thorough needs assessment related to this particular proposal. Now, again, as it states, there was an interest in reviewing the school resource officer proposal and getting a better understanding of what is going on with the program and better understanding the needs. And as I noted very specifically, truant office, a truant officer or additional support for any student truancy was something that surfaced several times. Now to go back to the FY19 budget, the budget subcommittee spent some time deliberating. The school committee as a whole has not yet voted on any changes to the budget, and this is simply because we don't know yet what the bottom line is. We will ultimately make, you know, final decisions about what positions will be cut, what positions will stay. But much of this really hinges on what the final number is in our budget. And as the mayor noted, and as it states here, we did identify additional, additional funds that could be spent through a variety of revolving accounts. Now, our, our spending with our revolving accounts is governed by school committee policy, and it is important for us to carry balances in these accounts moving forward into the coming years in order to provide stability for the district and also to provide a little bit of flexibility with some of, some expenditures that may be unanticipated at the start of the year. So what the superintendent has put forward at this time is her recommendation, which keeps us within what the school committee has deemed to be responsible limits for our revolving funds moving into each coming year. That leaves us still with a very big gap. And when we start to think about what we may prioritize, it can be kind of difficult to have that conversation, especially sitting here in front of you with the council, because, again, the school committee as a whole hasn't voted on this. But generally speaking, the superintendent has put forward the recommendation to, as a number one priority, to retain existing teachers, and also to look at priority areas where we may need to be adding in teachers. At least one of our school committee members has been a fierce advocate for an additional fifth grade teacher at the middle school. Again, this is something of interest to everyone on the school committee as well as the superintendent. A second priority would be to be looking at our instructional assistance and, again, looking at what we can retain, at who we can retain, and what sorts of reorganization we could put forward. And then, then we begin to address the needs that our school committee budget has already, the school committee budget that was put forward is attempting to address, and that would include additional special education teacher, again, classroom teachers, behavioral and mental support, and beyond. In terms of the number, $400,000, each individual member had their own reasons for why they felt that was an adequate amount that the council could put forward to support our budget. Member Hollins put the motion forward, and I believe that she felt that, you know, $250,000 could go to support the budget as well as an additional with existing staff. She also included some money to address the capital needs that were discussed earlier, fencing as well as swipe cards, in addition, fifth grade teachers, and beyond. For myself, I believe that, you know, $400,000 is just approximately what would keep us at level services moving into next year, and would allow us the flexibility to not only keep us at level services, but then continue to address the needs of our students and our changing student body. The superintendent was not able to attend this evening. However, she is available by phone if there are any questions this evening. I can attempt to get some answers as well. I'm happy to. I'm happy to, um, forward any questions to her so that you all have what you need and all the information that you need to make decisions about our budget. I think that I might have covered everything. If there are any questions or if committee members would like to speak to anything. Vice President Ricketts?
All right, before we get to the budget, I just want to congratulate the middle school program. They won platinum, um, last week with, for the music. So that was a really big deal, so. Yes, first time in the history of the school for those who've never heard that. So that was great.
Thank you, Penny.
I don't know if you can give it to us, you don't have to give it to us tonight, but if you can, you're trying to not lose 18 positions of staffing. So that 18 must have a specific dollar amount. So we don't need names, but if we knew what positions you're talking about here.
My understanding is that the superintendent is looking at six teaching positions and 12 instructional assistant positions. I don't know all of the specifics of those positions. However, I do know that some of them are currently not filled, not because of need, but because for a moment there, we weren't sure that we were going to be getting the 1% back into our budget. And there, uh, there was just some question there. But there is a need for those positions, um, yes. So if you are looking, that again, though, I do want to stress that the school committee hasn't voted on that. And it's really difficult even to sit here and to raise alarm related to, um, potentially making these reductions. It's very uncomfortable. We're talking about real people here and, um, and I do want to just, uh, you know, ensure that the school committee is represented and that they do have authority over this ultimately to help to direct the priorities.
Counselor Ellis?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to request some information, and I can put it in an email tomorrow because it's, uh, it may not be something we want to take down shorthand. We talked, or you spoke of revolving funds and specific revolving funds that you had targeted for spending in case, or not in case, for spending due to the, um, like, well, it's not a cut, it's just not an increase. The non-increase to the budget. Could we get a five-year recap of those revolving funds and what money was spent out of those funds and what that money was spent on in those last five years? And then also, can we get a breakdown of what the, what the things you have targeted out of those would be for, excuse me, for this year? I can put that in an email tomorrow. I know it's a lot, so I, I can put that in an email tomorrow if, if that would be helpful.
Could you repeat the second part of the question?
The second part of the question was what the items that you have targeted for this year's budget. You said there was 400 and, uh, 428,000 from the revolving funds. I'm curious what that 428,000 is and what it is for, what those things that you had targeted out of those revolving funds were.
Sure.
If you know it now, I would, I'd love to hear it, but you don't, I, you don't have to if you don't know it.
Well, I will, I will have the superintendent respond to you more specifically and also include in that email correspondence our policy on revolving funds because I think it's really helpful for folks to read, to know a little bit more about what the revolving fund restrictions are and what that money is meant to be used for. yeah, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I would absolutely like to see that, that policy as well.
Yeah, most definitely.
And if she could forward any of the state law governing those revolving funds, that would be great too.
Yeah, sure. I believe that some of them are actually cited in our policy. If anyone wants to look right now, it's policy D as in dog, B as in boy, E as in equal. That is available online right now. I, she's texting me right now. However, also in terms of a five-year report, I believe that we can put together as much information as possible. We do have even a report in front of us right now that has this year and some of FY17 information. However, five years would actually go into a previous superintendency. And some of the account balances may not be available. Some of that information may not be available. It's my understanding that, um, the current practice is, um, quite open and this information is, uh, a little bit more accessible, but we will do the best we absolutely can.
Thank you.
Counselor Mass?
Sorry, Counselor. Member Hollins wanted to add something in.
I think if you would look at the revolving fund policy, which is something new, it would not tell you exactly what was spent, but it would clear up the mystery of the revolving fund, like one is food service. It can only be spent on food service. And what we put in the policy and we spent a year on our policy, it says how many times this came up. It looks like at least eight different times, to say what's the responsible amount in food service to carry forward. One is for the after-school programs. It can only be spent in the startup of after-school programs before people are paying anything, any staff, higher staff. What, and we went over like, how much do you really need to carry forward so you're guaranteed you can get your programs up and running? And the policy is three pages long and explains what the money can be used for because in each revolving fund like your own, it can only be used for certain things. And then what's the responsible amount we think we should carry forward? So when we went through our funds, um, we were very specific, looking at each one that we tried to stay with the policy. But I think if you had this, it would answer your questions because the money can only be spent for what the funds set up for. It will help.
I just have a quick follow-up.
Sure, sure. Counselor Ellis?
I'm only asking for five years because that's typically what we like to see on the town budget side. We like to go back historically. So I, I just would like to see the historical data on it for, for reference. Thank you.
It's a great question. Thank you.
Counselor Mass?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you. We, I think we've worked very well together this year. And I know, at least speaking for myself, I've worked very hard to make sure the school department, this body is in a position where it can fully consider school departments and school committees' requests. Counselor Ellis and I proposed $489,000 in proposed cuts. That might be, make itself available for the school department. I also happen to know that the supplemental state budget includes an additional $25 million in supplemental special education, which was underfunded. And there's an anticipated additional $25 million in a second supplemental budget that's likely to take us to full funding. So there's some additional state resources that are likely to come in to put us in a slightly better position. Obviously, 50 million puts us just at full funding. It's what we had hoped for before, but I know we were conservative in our budgeting last year related to special education. I, I have, I have deep, deep concerns about, um, the, the suggestion that there might be layoffs. And I know that you don't take that lightly. However, um, we have, um, we did, we, we did the work clearly to make sure the council knew that it has the ability to appropriate beyond the mayor's recommendation, which he, which we had to get a second legal opinion to clarify. We've really put ourselves in that, in the position to fully consider you. But we have, it's a very high threshold for an additional appropriation to the school committee. Requires a two-thirds vote of a somewhat divided council. And I, I just want to, for my part, express my concerns related to an additional appropriation so that the school committee members and staff have the opportunity to make the best case to persuade me. And one of those, um, that my chief concern is, um, state revolving accounts like special education where school policies, uh, school, school committee policies keep high reserves in those departments. And, and the reason why I have, I understand the need to have a reserve in those, in those, um, departments. But my concern is that this, in listening and working cooperatively with the school side, the town created a special education stabilization account, so we could do that. And it's my belief that that a town-side special education stabilization account is the best place for those reserves to be held and that this, the, the funds that come directly into the school department should be spent down far in excess of what you're currently doing. And the reasoning for that is when, when I served as chairman of Ways and Means, I sat in on our bond council and bond, our, our bond hearings with Moody's. And they do not consider the reserves in the school committee. They consider all of the stabilization accounts on the town side, which means our bond rating is dependent on those reserves. And when we hold monies in reserve for those special education purposes on the school side, we actually increase the cost of capital spending for all projects within the municipality, including school projects, including school projects for the benefit of special education students. And so I'm hoping that we can get to a place where we start to tear down some of the silos. And I know this, I have a long history of knowing that this is a deep problem between the town and school side. But if we can tear down some of the silos and build a more robust town-side special education stabilization account, we can put both the school and the town side in a more fiscally stable position. I understand how difficult that can be when you have a mayor who won't even reconsider, um, capital expenditures with you based on what your priorities are when the council has also said that we are more inclined to support those priorities. But I hope that within the next week, and I know there's not a lot of time, that there will be some additional conversation and communication, at least as towards near-term planning, about how we can reach a consensus on what's in the best interest of all the people of Greenfield. Thank you.
Any other questions for, um, the school committee? Seeing none, um, thank you very much.
I just want, can I, can I just add one quick thing?
Sure.
So I appreciate, um, Counselor Mass, that you brought up the bond rating. That is a question that I have for Elizabeth that I've been holding until she's back. And, um, I'm glad that you brought it up. And I do believe that it is true that it, you know, that our policy that we, um, voted in at the end of last year went through much deliberation. And this is because we take very seriously what it is that we have in our accounts and we understand that we are not wanting to hoard money. We are wanting to budget responsibly for the district and to ensure that we have stability. And so we have a number of things that will come up from time to time, including contracts that will get negotiated. If we want to support increases, um, if we want to have a little flexibility with, um, paying our bills even through special education. It is a possibility to spend, to support some other projects that may arise. It's, some things are unpredictable. And I do believe, I stand by, um, what the school committee is currently, or at least the subcommittee is supporting in terms of spending our revolving accounts. There is a balance between, um, keeping money on hand for emergencies or to support things that come up that we think would be, um, great for our students to engage with. And also just, you know, holding it back, you know, you know, there's, there is a balance there that we, that we take very seriously. And that's it. I'll close on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody wish to speak on the public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at 9:05 PM. And I'm looking for a motion. Right now, we're, we're, there's probably going to be a motion that's made to go into executive session. So anybody watching on TV, I assume the screen will go blank. But we'll be back. We're not going to adjourn in, in executive session. So I'm going to need a motion to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares.
Second.
All in favor? opposed? Abstain? We're going to do a roll call vote just to make sure.
Yes.
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 We will return. Welcome back to the 181st regular meeting of the Greenfield Town Council. We have, um, one more communication and, um, just, uh, just ask everybody, I'm not trying to stifle conversation, but if we could just be mindful of the time and brevity would be much appreciated. So GSET Director Lunt.
Good evening, councilors. I will be brief. We're finishing up another good month. You have a letter that came to you from the Board of Commissioners. I won't go into it again. You can all read for yourselves. I just wanted to quickly add that the, um, the idea of a payment in lieu of taxes agreement is something that is currently in practice in Chapter 164 MLPs who use a Mass General Law 44 Enterprise Fund Method of Accounting primarily in eastern Massachusetts. And I was able to speak to the general manager of an MLP. And it is accepted practice, so there is good precedent for that as well. I do want to just say quickly that initially, we did not believe that there was the necessity for a transfer of fund votes from the special fund that currently exists into the enterprise fund. That came from an older version of the Enterprise Fund Manual. And all credit to Elizabeth Bracia, who went back in again. And that is something that has been updated. And it is something that we need to do, so I would appreciate your support on that. I wanted to, uh, we are working. I wanted to thank Counselor Mass. We're working on, uh, language changes to help us find a regulator. That's an ongoing process, but we think it's best for us to be a part of that process rather than to just wait and see what happens. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Ellis?
Just one, maybe two questions. You are finding it very eas- easy to work with the town on financial matters for GSET, correct?
Correct.
And you don't feel like there's any, um, issues or laws being broken at this, at any point that you've been there with regard to the financial situation at GSET?
I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, excuse me. We're going to be moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. I'm sorry, but the first motion, um, is not on for tonight. That's going to be at next week's meeting. So Counselor Stempel. The Town Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, in order to appropriate from free cash in the amount of $450,000 to stabilization, ordered that the Greenfield City Council, town or city council? The Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $450,000 from free cash to the following stabilization funds. $200,000 to general stabilization, $50,000 to capital stabilization, $50,000 to building maintenance stabilization, $150,000 to special education stabilization.
Second.
There's been a motion that's been seconded. A report from committee.
Sorry, I'm like, wake up, Ashley. So we actually recommended to table because at the time, we had some information that we didn't have all the information. So the figure of what is available in free cash to move to stabilization accounts has actually changed.
Counselor Alice?
Yeah, I would like to make an amendment to this, to amend it to say the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of... Hang on. $195,912 to the following stabilization funds: $131,264 and 4 cents to general stabilization, $64,650 and 96 cents to the special education stabilization fund. If I could just quickly explain, we don't have $450,000 in, excuse me, in free cash. We have the total of $195,912 in free cash at this point. If we do not take a vote on this prior to June 30th, it will close to free cash and then be tied up in that process and will be unavailable to be used for anything. And given that the town auditor who writes our financial motions is, will not be back in time to be able to write a motion for us to even take up at a later date, tonight's the night to deal with this. And given, given the fact, the numbers that I gave to you includes the same percentage as was provided from the $450,000 into each account. I just lumped the three stabilization accounts at the top of your motion together and then took the 33% that was allocated to the special education fund and just took that 33% over to the $195,912 that was left, and that's how I got to those numbers.
So any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, so right now, we are voting on the amendment to appropriate from free cash in the amount of $195,912. Do we have a... Any other discussion? Nope. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The amendment passes. So now, we're looking at, the full motion is, in order to appropriate from free cash in the amount of $195,912. Is there any discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes. Okay. Counselor Stempel?
The Town Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, in order to transfer the fund balance of GSET special revenue to the telecommunication enterprise fund, ordered that deceive the city of Greenfield will transfer the fund balance of the GSET municipal light plant special revenue to the newly established telecommunications broadband enterprise fund.
Motion has been made and seconded. Report from committee?
This was unanimous positive recommendation. We're taking action on something we needed to do before, creating two halves to a whole.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Vice President Ricketts?
The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Charter be amended by inserting the following new sections in Article 2 Legislative Branch, Section 2-7, Access to Information. Minority access to information: any three individual members of council may, with 30 days' written notice, require any town officer, member of town agency, or town employee to provide written answers to information, as those councils may require in relation to municipal services, functions, power, or duties which are within the scope of the responsibility of such person and within the jurisdiction of the town council. Such notice shall be filed with the town clerk, who shall provide copies to the full Town Council and mayor. Freedom of communication: notwithstanding the requirements of the section, individual councillor may communicate directly with any town officer, member of town agency, or town employee, who within their personal direction may or may not respond to that individual's member request for information. The mayor may require any town officer, member, or town agency, or town employee to answer individual councillor's request for information, but shall take no action to prevent the same unless the communication of such information is not permissible by state or federal law. G Whistleblower Protections: any town officer, member of town agency, or town employee may communicate at any time with any town councillor in any manner which they deem fit, and shall not be subject to any adverse action for providing information to the Town Council as a whole or any councillor individually. And that the Town Council further instructs the town clerk to submit the approved vote to the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request said legislator to amend the Town Charter.
Motion has been made and seconded. Report from committee?
We had two yes and three no.
Counselor Mass?
Mayors ask for further engagement on the charter amendments. I would make a non-debatable motion to table indefinitely.
Is there a second? Okay, that's a non-debatable motion, so all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
How many opposed? I'm sorry. Okay. Abstained. So it's tabled. Vice President Ricketts?
Yes. Counselor Mass, would you like to have that table too? I'm just wondering if you're going to ask, like, we could just table this.
You need to be on the floor.
Okay.
You can be as written in the back.
The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council amend the council rules of procedure, order disposition of business agenda by inserting the following new language in section. At each following meeting of the Town Council, a council designated by the president of the council shall have the opportunity to invite a person or group of people to lead the Town Council in the pledge allegiance. This is the one. It's this one. Yeah, it doesn't matter. We don't get to talk about any of them tonight, even though I was asked. The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Charter be amended by striking Article 2 Legislative Branch, Section 211, in its entirety, inserting the following in its place. Filling of vacancies: if a vacancy should occur in the office of precinct councillor or councillor at large more than 90 days prior to the next annual town election, at which the office would not ordinarily be subject to election, council president with the advice of the committee chairs may fill the seat by appointing a person eligible under Section 2-1(c) of the Charter, subject to a 2/3 vote of the councillor's present, to serve until the next annual town election, at which time a person shall be elected to fill the unexpired term and shall be able to serve upon the certification of the election until the expiration of the term. If a vacancy should occur in the office of precinct councillor or a councillor at large within 90 days prior to the next annual town election, in which the office would not ordinarily be subject to election, the council president with the advice of the committee chairs may fill the seat by appointing a person eligible under Section 2-1(c) of the Charter, subject to 2/3 of the vote of councillor's present, to serve until the expiration of the term. Vacancy should occur in the office of precinct councillor or councillor at large within 90 days prior to the next annual town election, in which that office would ordinarily be subject to election. The seat shall remain vacant until the annual town election, at which time a person may be elected upon this certification to fill the balance on unexpired term, together with a four-year term, and that the Town Council further instructs town clerk to submit, improve the vote to Legislature of the Commonwealth, and request said legislature to amend the Town Charter.
Second.
Unanimous positive?
Okay. So the motion was made, did I hear a second?
Yeah.
Okay, and so, report from committee was unanimous positive? Okay. And so, is there any discussion? Counselor Mass?
Same rationale, I move to table indefinitely.
Is there a second? Okay, it's a non-debatable motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. The motion, and there's no abstentions, the motion to table passes. Counselor, Vice President Ricketts?
The Town Council moved that it be ordered, that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council amend the Town Council Rules of Procedure 12618, order disposition of business agenda by inserting the following new language, Section 3. At each full meeting of the Town Council, a council designated by the president of the council shall have the opportunity to invite a person or group of people to lead the Town Council in the pledge of allegiance voluntarily in A13. No councillor shall be required to make such invitation or participate in the pledge allegiance. Notwithstanding that they have made such invitation, the inviting councillor shall be provided opportunity to induce the invited guest. The president shall produce a schedule of councillor-designated meetings within the first week of January of each week, each year, providing that no councillor is given more than one invitation. The president shall be able, at their discretion provided, such an invitation when other councillors decline to participate at special meetings or councillor as they see fit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee?
Four to one, not in favor.
Is there any discussion? Counselor Mass?
Committee on Relations and Education Committee having unanimous positive recommendation.
Is there any other discussion? Maybe folks who voted at A&amp;O?
Yep.
Vice President Ricketts?
So at first blush, when we saw this, we kind of liked it. And then, as more was discussed, we found out things like, we said, well, what if there's somebody controversial, whoever will come up to lead the pledge? And then it was brought up, like, we would keep that a secret and just let it out, like, the week of the meeting, and we were like, hmm, we didn't, we thought we were going to be transparent. And then we felt like we would let a councillor do the introduction, as it says here, but they may get, it might be timely, more than they want it to be. As we all know, the three minutes goes really fast. And then the group that comes before us, they get to say, you know, a couple of words about who they are, and that's not bad at all. Again, three minutes is tough to regulate. Some people that have not been on council before knows that this has come up numerous times to even have the pledge allegiance, and it's always been voted down. It's finally been voted up, and we have it, and now we're adding this other step. And I just fear that adding this is going to get it to be something that we will vote the pledge down again in the future. So just to keep it, you know, just the way it is, we felt was fine. And other people can weigh in.
Counselor Sun?
I would think it'd be an honor to go and see if somebody would be willing to set up the pledge allegiance of the flag. Whether they have the, they can state who they are in three minutes or what they stand for, it doesn't matter, because it's optional to do it here when you're saying the pledge. And I like to, you know, find out who the people are in town. Who do, you know, you ask them to come, they had the right to say yes or no. And it's just good if you find somebody that we feel, we'd be willing to come and do it. And there's a lot of people around that I know would enjoy coming before the Town Council and saying the pledge. And I know some people think that this might be put out again, but it took a long time to get it being said here in Town Council. So I just feel that it should go forward.
Thank you. Counselor Gilmore?
So I agree with much of what Counselor Sun just said, but I think that the discussion we were having at A&amp;O was that this would become an opportunity for soapbox. So I think it would start off with, you know, the Boy Scouts come in and they talk about the trees they just planted, you know, with the tree committee recently. And then we've got, you know, the middle school band comes in and talks about the, you know, they won that great award, and that's wonderful, but when we start getting into all these lightning rod issues, we have more special interest groups in Greenfield than we probably have people. So, you know, when those special interest groups come in and they want to start talking about their issue and then lead the pledge of allegiance, I feel like this is going to become something that's a distraction from the business of the council, and it's going to become a soapbox.
Counselor Mass?
Just to be clear, notwithstanding some of the discussion that happened, nothing in the actual language gives the ability for the group that's coming forward to say anything. Only the councillor who invited them to introduce them. There's no three minutes in there. The amount of time that they're recognized for is at the discretion of the president. The president has the ability to limit that to any amount of time the president deems fit. There's nothing about secrecy in here or non-transparency. None of that exists in the actual language. I think people are projecting some things that they might be fearful of, but I think, and that's certainly understandable, but that isn't in the actual language, and we certainly, I trust my colleagues to act appropriately.
Counselor Stempel and then Vice President Ricketts?
Okay, so I just want to make clear one statement. So during the A&amp;O meeting, it was never said that we would keep the names of whoever was going to come forward to ourselves until the meeting. I think we could ask the A&amp;O committee, but we didn't say it.
If I said anything, I said there's nothing in the rule that requires prior disclosure or announcement. It's silent on it, so it's, I mean, it's totally up to individual councillors. The language that's before us is silent on that issue.
Right. I'm just saying that during that meeting, that's what you had brought up, is that we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that. We would just keep it to ourselves until that evening.
Counselor Ashley?
At this time, I'd like to call a question. The question has been called. So is there a motion, is there a second to call a question? Okay, all those in favor calling a question?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, none. All right, so we're going to vote. So on the motion right now that we were just discussing, that it, I kind of want to read it over again so that folks know exactly what we're, I'm not going to read the entire thing, I'm just going to read the top of the motion, just to make sure that we're all clear. That the Greenfield Town Council amend Town Council Rules of Procedure Order Disposition of Business by inserting the following new language, which has to do with the pledge of allegiance, and changing things with the pledge of allegiance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Clerk, can we do a roll call vote?
Counselor Sun?
Aye.
Counselor Lovebath?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
Yes.
Counselor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Yonmore?
No.
Counselor Reilly?
No.
Counselor Mayhew? Yes.
Counselor Wehawatt?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
No.
Motion passes? The motion passes. Ready?
The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council amend the Code of the Town of Greenfield by adding Chapter 341 Precinct Meeting Ordinance as attached here too, and further amend the Table of Contents and the Index of Contents in the Code, and further that the non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the Town of Greenfield. Chapter 341 Precinct Meeting Ordinance, purpose, precinct notice scheduling composition of panel, limitations, a purpose, the ordinance is to allow meaningful dialogues and community problems of community concern. Precinct meeting in all even ending years, a town shall hold public open meetings in each of the nine precincts of the town for the purpose of hearing community concerns and communicating executive and legislative policy and initiatives through panel. A meeting place is not available in the precinct, it shall be on a location as close to the precinct as possible. Notice, the notice of the mayor shall send notice by postcard to every household in the precinct established by the last municipal census with the time, place, and location of the meeting. When no less than 21 days advance of the meeting, all precinct meetings shall be posted as open meeting. The mayor shall schedule the date, time, location of the meeting after consultation with the precinct councillors. Pale listening and answering questions shall consist of the following: precinct councillor one to four at-large councillors available, the mayor is designee, the chief of police is designee, fire chief is designee, DPW chief is designee, as member of the... Pale listening and answering questions shall consist of the following precinct counselor one to four at-large counselors available. The mayor is designated, the chief of police designated, fire chief designated, DPW chief designated, as member of the finance team selected by the mayor. A member of the economic development team is selected by the mayor, one or more representatives of the human services department chosen by the mayor, one or more members of inspection department, as chosen by the mayor, and the superintendent of schools designated. Such panels shall be run by the mayor designated. The mayor shall by electronic means send invitations to each precinct meeting, to the chairs of every multiple-member board of the Town of Greenfield, who may, but shall not be required to attend or send a designated. Nothing in the ordinance shall prohibit, prohibit the mayor, counselors from hosting additional meetings at any time.
Second?
Second.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. Report from committee.
Unanimous, yes.
Okay. Discussion. Any discussion on this? We're, oh, there we go. Counselor Stempel.
Counselor Ashley. I appreciate the work that went into this, but I'm not gonna support this. I think this is a great idea. However, we can't just make everything that we want to happen in ordinance. I think that this is something that can be organized per precinct counselors, or at-large counselors, or a combination of the like, but I just feel, I just feel like this is a community organizing aspect of our job, and creating structure around it. It just, it's just another law to add to our books, and I think this is more of a community organizing initiative.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Wheeler?
I totally understand Counselor Stempel's concerns, but I would say that as counselors, we are lacking in resources to organize meetings like this. And as a precinct counselor, I would love to be able to get the word out to as many people as possible, and I think that this ordinance provides a way to do that that I wouldn't otherwise have.
Any other discussion? Counselor Sun?
Yes, I go along with this. I think we need to be more out, outspoken in our precincts and have more input from the people there. A lot of them can't make it to the Town Council meetings, and it'd be a good idea to have, like, we do different, our, yeah. When I sit on without, Isaac and, where we can all meet at different places, it'd be good to meet in the precincts, you know, to our precincts. You know, it's optional, but I think it'd be a good idea to have it done.
Counselor Lobach?
I just wanna say that one of the reasons that we're elected to be counselors is that we're here to represent the people in districts, you know, especially in the precincts. So, they have a right to, to express their opinions and what their concerns are, and they should be able to do that, hopefully, in a venue that's close to their home, especially for the elderly people who can't drive or get rides to the place, they may be able to walk over to that school. And it, I, I just can't understand why anybody would be against this. I, it, it's perfect, because we represent the people of this town, and we should continue to do that.
Thank you, Counselor Lobach. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstain? Motion carries. Counselor Stempel?
My pleasure, President Renault. The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council, I'm gonna read this slowly, that the Greenfield Town Council amends the Code of the Town of Greenfield by amending Chapter 27, Article 3, Departmental Revolving Fund to include the table as attached. Hereeto and further amends the Table of Contents and Index of Contents of the Code, and further that non-substanti, non-substant, non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of the Town of Greenfield.
Is there a second? Second. Motion has been made and seconded by Counselor Alice. Report from committee?
Our recommendation was a unanimous positive. There is a note here from Director Baratia saying that it is, it is our duty of, of the council to, I guess, set forth limits. I, I don't know, I'm not speaking intelligently right now, it's like, but, so, every year we, we set limits, caps, so to speak, on revolving funds, and due to the modernize, the Municipal Modernization Act, we had to resubmit an organized chart, I'm looking to Counselor Alice here, of our, of our revolving funds. And so, essentially, this grid, which begins on page 20 of our full packet, is, and was to be submitted with that amendment of our code. Am I saying that right?
Hey, that sounds good. Is there any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Counselor Leonovich?
I can read it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Actually, I, if you're gonna abstain, you can't read the motion.
Oh. Oh, I forgot about that, I'm sorry. Would, would another counselor?
You also can't debate it. I'll read it if you want.
Okay, sure. Counselor Alice?
What page is it, sir?
Thirty-two.
She was being a member involved.
Move that it be ordered to adopt the resolution authorizing the submission of a local incentive on the application and tax increment financing agreement for Valley Steel Stamp Inc. to the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council for their review and approval, support, support Valley Steel Stamp Inc., Support Valley Steel Stamps Inc. Incorporated's application for the state investment tax credits, and to waive the reading of the resolution.
Okay. Report from committee? Anybody on EDC? Counselor Gilmore?
I believe we were all unanimous in supporting this, because this company has had TIPS from the town before, they have performed better than expected. This is a, a good employer that provides decent, well-paying jobs to blue collar workers, and this is the sort of development we wanna see in our town.
Great. Any other discussion? Counselor Alice?
Just like to say for the record, Counselor Leonovich has left the rail because he works for this particular company, and has recused himself to the audience.
Oh, okay. Counselor Mass?
Probably doesn't need to be said, but just in, in, as we look at these in the future, I, I've gotta say that this is one of the best structured TIPS I've seen in a very, very long time. The 30% across the board is both not excessive, and it, it does not do what has happened in the past, which is create a incentive for layoffs in the years where the tax break is, is relatively low in the out years. So, good job for the TIP committee who put it together.
Any other discussion? Counselor Sun?
I just, this company is really good. You know, I, I've known it since it began in Greenfield, and they've done an outstanding job with employees and, and hiring and, and the product they put out.
Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we know that Counselor Leonovich is abstaining, and the motion passes.
Be it moved that the Greenfield Town Council approves the attached resolution titled Resolution Supporting the Culture of Civility in the Town of Greenfield. As written in the packet, on pages 50 and 51.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Report from committee?
I'll defer to Counselor Mayo. I was not present at this, this committee when they voted. Hi, I don't have my notes here, but I believe it was a positive vote in favor of.
Hello. Any other discussion? It sounds like it was a positive.
It was a positive unanimous. I just got it in my ear from this.
Okay. Great. So, thank you, Counselor Mayo. Is there any, I mean, this kinda seems like a no-brainer, but is there any discussion on this?
I do. It's not so much of a no-brainer to me.
Okay. Counselor Leonovich?
I just wrote.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I said, first, let me say that most of what's said in this packet, I fully agree with, and I have chosen in my life, with respect for others, and in general, to conduct myself in a manner that would not be seen as hateful or intentionally hurtful. I see the resolution mostly as good for personal guideline for people to strive for. Where the, where the resolution runs foul to my sensibilities is the fact that we are a governing body, and therefore should not be seen as restricting anyone's free speech or any, or even attempting to set guidelines on how anyone should speak. I bristle at the idea that the resolution written by this body would have a line that states we protect free speech that is not simply ended with a period and an end of sentence. I understand we desire to be able to live in a world where someone doesn't say anything that hurts, demeans, or offends you, but how is this possible in a practicality? In this group of 13, it would be hard to have a long conversation where one doesn't feel hurt or offended by what is said, even in the, if the intention isn't to do so. We just saw that today with, with what Mayor was making comment to. But in a group of 100, that becomes more difficult. In a group of 10,000, it's nearly impossible. The right to speak freely allows ideas to form and develop. It allows us to noodle out things, to know our boundaries, to learn about how not to be hurtful. When we ask the people of Greenfield to commit to not using hate speech, including racist slurs, homophobic name-calling, sexist cat calls, and other forms of degradation, who could we say is the arbiter of quali, of what qualifies as such? Who, who determines what degrading speech actually is or isn't? I would just say that, yes, it is our job as individuals to re-inculcate virtue back into society, to encourage others to behave in a manner which shows dignity and respect to our fellow man. We can do that through our encounters we have with people we come in contact with, but as a governing body, I feel that what we need to say is we believe in freedom of speech, period, end of sentence.
Counselor Mass?
I appreciate Counselor Leonovich's comments. I know they're very thoughtful. I've served on a, on the council, this is my sixth term, and what I have learned in my six terms is one of our responsibilities is to be the conscious, conscience of the community. This is a resolution, it's not an ordinance or, or an appropriation. This is aspirational. We are all imperfect beings, and we will all fail to meet the lofty goal that this resolution sets forth, both for us individually and certainly our community, will, will sometimes falter. That does not mean that we should not set that lofty goal as an aspiration on behalf of our community as a whole, as a whole of our residents, and I think true communication, we are best able to communicate with each other with, when we communicate in a way that does not degrade other people. That does not mean that we should not be, try to understand those people who do, but it does mean that we should, as a community, aspire to more. And so, while I'm not the, the author of this resolution or the sponsor, I, I have and am completely in support of free speech, do support the resolution, and I, I appreciate Counselor Leonovich's comments.
Counselor Stempel?
Very brief. I, I just wanna say that I, I appreciate the conversation put forth by both Counselor Leonovich, as well as Counselor Mass, and I just wanna acknowledge that even at this hour, we can be very thoughtful in, in how we're moving forward. I, as a journalist with a background in journalism, free speech is really important to the craft that I do as a communicator, so thank you very much for bringing that forward.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Two opposed, two noes? Counselor Ricketts? Okay. Any abstentions? Moving on, it's Counselor Leonovich.
I don't have to abstain from this, though. Recuse myself. The Town Council moved that it be ordered that the Town Council of Greenfield hereby initiate the following proposed zoning ordinance amendment relative to marijuana establishments in accordance with MGLC 40A Section 5 by replacing Section 200-7 Temporary Moratorium on Recreational Marijuana Establishments with, which expires June 30th, 2018, in its entirety with the following new ordinance regulating all registered marijuana establishments as attached.
Second? Okay. So, this is just to initiate the zoning for recreational marijuana? Is there any discussion? Yes. Counselor Stempel?
Is this in reference to the amendments featured on page 63 in our full packet, or is this just to amend the fact that we are in a moratorium?
Counselor Mass, did you have your, do you wanna answer this?
So, to clarify, we're in a moratorium, we require, well, if we want to have an ordinance, we need to pass an ordinance with, before July 1, when the timeline begins. When given the, that's just for clarification. Page 63 is my proposal for an amendment prior to initiation, and would recognize by the chair for that purpose, I'll make that amendment.
And so, for clarity purposes, we are initiating, we'd be voting to initiate that amendment on page 63?
Yes. Well, once, once the amendment is made. So, we're just initiating everything. We're not, it's not a done deal tonight, we're just starting the process. Counselor Dolan?
Just a process question. Once we initiate this, we'll have a joint EDC Planning Board hearing where we'll ha, and then we'll hash out final language, and then we'll have a chance to amend that. So, we are not, we take.
Okay. Hang on one second. Just pause for a moment, everybody.
A public hearing, yeah.
Counselor Mass, explain how your amendment would work with this.
So, my amendment on page 63 is a proposal for a change prior to initiation. Once we initiate, we're sort of locked into that language, any language, any amendments after that time either require a new notice, a public, public hearing notice, a new, new public hearings, new initiation, or if passed, are subject to challenge within the first, I think it's 40 days, but I'd have to look at the statute after it's passed. If it's not challenged, it would become law, even if it was a substantive change, but this is a ordinance that would likely be challenged if we did not follow the correct process, and so, we should, if we're going to make a change, we should consider doing it at this stage.
So, Counselor Mass, do you wanna move to make your amendment now, and then we can have a discussion and vote on that?
I move to amend the proposed ordinance by amending, by, by amending in E4, striking the words kindergarten or any grades one through 12, and replacing with the words pre-thru, preschool, through, and including college or any pre-existing house of worship.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So, the amendment has been made and seconded, so I stand to be corrected. We are going to, this isn't just about initiation, because it would be harder to undo this amendment once we start it, so we will be discussing and debating this amendment tonight, and if you pass it, then it, then it, then, then we'd have to restart the entire process to undo it. So, Counselor Mass, you wanna speak about your rationale?
So the first portion of this amendment is about schools. We have schools that are lower than kindergarten, schools that exceed 12th grade. I don't think anyone contemplates or wants a marijuana retail establishment next to the North Parish preschool, or any of the other preschools in Greenfield. The second portion is related to pre-existing houses of worship. Most municipalities in the Commonwealth are including language like this, though they have larger buffer zones than we have. They are including this. Alcohol establishments have requirements for houses of worship. If you're going to get alcohol license, you need, within 300 feet of a pre-existing house of worship, you need to give notice and opportunity to be heard. I think this is a difficult, I'm going to highly recommend that we adopt this ordinance and this amendment, and the reason that I'm going to ask that we adopt it is, we can be... If we find that we decide we want lesser regulation, we can do that in the future, but passing an ordinance, a zoning ordinance, requires a 2/3 vote of the council. And I know I could not be a vote for this ordinance without this language, which makes the threshold much, much higher for the remaining councilors. So a failure to, while it only requires a majority to make a decision today, down the road, after we have the joint public hearing and the joint, and opportunity for the public to weigh in and comment, the threshold that we're going to have to pass by is 2/3. So we should do as much as possible to build consensus now and get something on the books. And if we want to have a broader debate on whether we should have marijuana establishments next to preschools or churches down the road, I think that is something that we could have, we could do when we're not under the gun of a January 1 start date.
Councilor Temple.
I don't appreciate threats of lax of votes in rationale for amendments, so I just want to put that on the record. I also want to address the fact that I missed a council meeting in 2016 as a result of a bone marrow transplant that I did. And I did that bone marrow transplant for my brother, who had been suffering from lymphoma for seven years. The only thing that would make my brother's life normal through the phase of being a cancer patient was being able to use medical marijuana in order to make him able to eat, walk, see clearly, and live as much of a normal life as he could. I want to address, councilors on the floor, that medical marijuana is included as the line of a marijuana establishment. We're very focused on the recreation right now, because of course, that was just voted on. And I want to remind councilors that you do represent your constituents, all of which, not all of which, but overwhelmingly, the majority of Greenfield residents and constituents voted to bring in marijuana into this community. But I want to address, we've been talking about the word stigma, and I want to address the stigma that this places on those patients who do use marijuana, and the right of adults to use marijuana as needed or desired. I want to also address the hypocrisy of this, when there is a CVS pharmacy next to Federal Street School, across the street from a church, and they sell the very drugs that are creating, I'm trying to, I wish I had access to correct terminology, but the CVS is essentially, if we want to break it down, the CVS could be considered an aid to, Sarah, I'm trying, an aid, an aid to create and to impact people with substance use disorders. So I understand, but it's almost like we should be ashamed of the fact that people need marijuana as a medical need. And so I don't support this, and I urge everyone to try and think outside of the box as to what we're saying with this added amendment.
Councilor Gilmore.
Yeah, I also wanted to point out that the state law that this refers to is really clear, that we should not be regulating businesses to the point where it's impracticable for them to open. And I think that by adding arbitrary things like, I think, you know, including the college, I think is arbitrary, because those are all adults, presumably over the age of 18. And I think the house of worship also, because they can open wherever they want, and I feel like what happens within a religious institution, you know, is governed by that religious institution, but they don't get to say what happens outside of their walls.
Vice President Ricketts?
I'm totally for this not being right next to a school. As far as the church, if that piece was taken out, I'm totally, could be for this. I don't see the problem there. I know that children do go to Sunday school or attend with their children, but I've also seen many families shop at the Big Y and go in and get a bottle of wine, and get beer, and put it in their carts as well. And so you're telling them, "You can't do this over here," one day, and out of all the people that we want to make this about, a church, people who should not judge others, is not what I really want to do. I totally get just a regular school. I don't get like a college. I don't get a church at all. And it's just because I see, I mean, I see middle school children going into Cumberland Farms on their own to buy candy and soda, and they sell cigarettes there. So I'm not understanding how children going to church with an entire family, put your hand down, let me just finish, with their whole family is so bad if this is near it. We don't even know if one will ever come, but just to set that up when we know that they may, I love all this.
Councilor Sun.
Yes, I just think, you know, there's a lot of churches that have schools, and where you, I have nothing against people that want to do marijuana medically or recreational, but it's not, not that, you know, you don't want kids that go into school there at a church, and you got a place right outside the church door that wants to give them candy or something like that, and they're, that's laced with marijuana, or the same thing. And there's, like I said, there's nothing, I have nothing against it, and it's just, not a good...
Councilor, just a point of order. When I see your hand raised, if I point to you, it means I'm going to remember it in my head. It's very distracting to some of the folks speaking when hands are continuously raised while they're speaking. I understand why you do it, but I see you, trust me. So Councilor Lobek.
Yeah, Blessed Sacrament, they teach CCD classes there.
Could you speak into the microphone a little bit more?
CCD classes at Blessed Sacrament. They teach in the, they teach in the rectory house, and they also teach classes in the church. My wife and I taught a confirmation class in Blessed Sacrament Church for one year. The children do go there after hours at night for classes, and sometimes they go like a Sunday morning on their own, by themselves. So I just think it's a fallacy where the, you know, sometimes children are around the churches and stuff like that on their own.
Councilor Dolan?
I have a lot of opinions about this. I'm going to, instead of going into those, just read a passage from the letter from Ginny Disorder on the Planning Board. So the day-long workshop I attended on March 17th, with five days after the Cannabis Commission approved their final 120-page legislation, people who have thought long and hard about this issue. Kay Doyle, one of the five members and a lawyer on the Cannabis Commission, led the workshop. She stated that the K-12 school was what should be used in the buffer zone guidelines. The Cannabis Commission thought long and hard about what to include in buffer zone, noting that by including churches, et cetera, such as proposed by Councilor Mass, would make it impracticable, as most downtown areas are full of churches. Attorney Doyle also stated, "By adding further language such as proposed by Councilor Mass, they indeed put City of Greenfield at risk for a lawsuit by retailer applying for a license. Distance was discretionary, not," in all capital letters, "adding other institutions. I would hate our town to be sued." So for me, I know that the Planning Board has put a lot of work into this. I tend to trust their expertise. I don't agree with every piece of language, but I'm willing to defer, because they've clearly done their research, been to the conferences. And just to add one other thing, I think it would be a real shame, we imposed a local option tax on marijuana at 3%, and I think it would be a real shame if we couldn't get an agreement through this commission, and we ended up foregoing that tax revenue to the city.
Councilor Temple. Okay. Councilor Mass.
First, let me say, I'm never going to apologize for asking to be recognized in this body. When people say that they don't understand things, I often want to explain them. I have served myself on the Planning Board. I also serve on the Massachusetts Municipal Association Board and the Counselors Association Board, which has been the municipal organization that has been dealing most heavily with the zoning regulations related to recreational marijuana. I was on the Planning Board when we adopted the Adult Entertainment Bylaw, so I am very, very familiar with the requirements that will trigger a lawsuit. If you look at our Adult Entertainment Bylaw, it is far, far more restrictive than including this. It has a much wider buffer zone. It does include the community college, and essentially, the only place that you can open an adult entertainment establishment is in the Home Depot Plaza, and it does not make us subject to litigation. While you can't bar completely, you can't create an ordinance that bars completely these types of establishments, I have no doubt, especially with the very small buffer zone, that this change will make it impracticable for someone to open a retail establishment. In fact, we have retail establishments that have already started in the processing of getting permitting at establishments that, at locations which would not violate this amendment. When, so there were questions about adults taking their children to locations where there is alcohol available. Certainly, parents can, there's, parents can take their children wherever they so choose, but if you're applying for a liquor license and you're within 300 feet of a church, you need to send notice and give an opportunity for that church to be heard prior to getting your license. When it comes to tobacco shops at places like Cumberland Farms, our Board of Health has actually set a very strict set of regulations. Cumberland Farms could not get a license to operate where they are today if they did not have a pre-existing license. We do a number of things to protect children, and while I understand there's disagreement on this board, on this issue, we do need to reach a place where 2/3 of us have, can agree. Otherwise, we face having no ordinance, and these establishments can locate everywhere. And it's not a threat for me, for me. It is my position that I personally, I don't speak for anyone else, I personally cannot vote in good conscience to allow, for a zoning measure that will allow a recreational retail establishment next to a church. This body can do what it wants, but they're not threats. It's information, and I think it's helpful in the dialogue. We can come back and revisit this if there's a consensus built that for 2/3, by 2/3 of the council, that, you know, we should have recreational marijuana next to preschools. We can have that discussion down the road, but we need to get something that we all agree on, on the books, that at least is a minimum set of regulations. And I'll say, I personally voted to legalize marijuana in Massachusetts, and I voted for the tax. The tax will not be affected by whatever zoning that we pass. We will have retail establishments. I urge us, I think this is, especially considering that the buffer that is set in this area is, I believe, 100 feet in the ordinance, this essentially means, you just can't locate directly next. You can't be a direct abutter of a church, or a preschool, or the community college.
Councilor Gilmore?
Yes, I would also like to remind everybody, Councilor Temple brought this up earlier, but I think it was over 3/4 of the residents of Greenfield who chose to vote, voted in favor of this. I would imagine that that's a much larger proportion of our residents than attend any of these churches. I think that by limiting what our voters have said they want, based on the concerns of a minority, based on religious reasons, is really not following the spirit or the intent of this law. I don't think it's what the voters wanted, and I think that generations coming up, the younger generations, are becoming less and less religious, and I feel like it would be difficult to speak on behalf of them when we're setting these laws forward.
Councilor Alice.
Thank you. I, I think the debate's gone a little strange here, but that's okay. Just a couple of points. I spoke with Ginny Disorder, who is one of my constituents, one of my favorite constituents. I really like her. We have a lot of good talks a lot of the time. And while I did receive that letter, I spoke to her after we received that letter at length about multiple things, at which point I explained to her that the buffers, that if the ordinance didn't pass, based on the fact that there was no buffer zone, that it would be allowed anywhere. And she said, "Oh, well, as long as it's not going to stop it, then that's fine." And that was our conversation. So while, while, while I agree that that letter is in fact a letter, and we did receive it, that's why you read it, that's great, but I believe, I believe her motivation in the conversation that I had with her was that she felt it would, that it was an attempt to try to kill having them altogether, which it most certainly is not. I will also speak on, churches aren't just for religious people, quote unquote. Boy Scouts meet there. Many youth groups meet there. Many civic and social groups meet there. At the church that I attend, one of the Black Lives Matters groups met there. So it's not just about religious people, because there are a lot of groups that have small children, school-aged children, that meet there. And they rent those places. Those churches make their tax payments, or not their tax payments, but their payments for the upkeep of the building, and in some cases, their mortgage, based on renting the space to those people. Those people meaning those groups. So I don't see an issue personally with adding a buffer zone... because if, if we were talking about any other thing, uh, adult entertainment, liquor, uh, cigarettes, we would not flinch at putting the buffer zones in. Wouldn't flinch. If we were talking about developing, we wouldn't flinch at putting buffer zones in. When it came to, if there was a wetland or some other, uh, type of impediment that, you know, we currently have buffer zones for because we want to protect, uh, whatever it is we're trying to protect. So, I think it's, I think it's a little, um, I think it's a little peace of mind for people. I don't think it's going to change any, uh, business who wants to come to Greenfield. They're going to come here, no matter, no matter what that regulation says, they will find a place to be if they want to be here. And we already know that people want to be here because they have put in their, um, applications to be here. So, I think, I don't, I don't believe that there was any threats this evening. I believe it was, um, and is prudent to make sure that whatever we have can get past the threshold that it takes to become law. Because if we don't, it'll go anywhere, and it'll be anywhere. And to, to be quite frank, I don't care where it goes. And, but, and I think that my consensus would be built on the fact that there are a number of people who have talked to me, who have come to me, and who have signed petitions saying they really do not want it next to the churches, not because they're religious, but because they have groups that meet there and children that go there for whatever they go there for. So, to me, I think to co, to come to a buffer zone that we have for every other type of, of regulated substance that the state decides to regulate makes absolute sense. And I gotta say that if it came down to it, I would also, I would vote no to allow it to be anywhere if we weren't going to have, uh, the buffer zone that I think we should have based on the fact that we have it for almost everything else that's regulated. So, that's not, and that's not a threat. I'm just telling you how I will vote. Thank you.
Counselor Dolan, then Counselor Stempel, then Vice President Ricketts.
Um, so, a, a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to point out that the need for a public hearing before opening a liquor store is different than an exclusion. That's a fundamentally different thing. Something I would be much more open to than the language that we have now. I would also like to point out that I am much less interested in development of this kind of business in the Home Depot Plaza or on the margins of town or anything like that. I am much more interested in having this in an economically vital, vibrant part of downtown that is walkable, um, that's not going to encourage more car culture, that's, that's going to be in line with our master plan, and it's going to add, life and vitality to our downtown, which is my focus. Um, so that's one of the reasons that I am against this kind of exclusion. And I, what I don't see in this packet is any kind of a study of what kind of real estate is available downtown once we put these buffers in place. And I, can I just clarify one thing? Is it true that if we fail to pass an ordinance, the sale of recreational marijuana will be allowed anywhere?
That is my belief. Counselor Stempel?
I, I just want to bring discussion back, and, um, I actually got to see President Obama last week on Monday. And one of the things that he said, um, that resonated with me very clearly in this culture is that, if we can't debate on just the simple facts, um, then what kind of debate do we have at all? And so, I want to bring us back to facts. Um, we've had a few counselors on the floor tonight, um, debating this amendment based on misinformation. It is not legal to, or, or even a practice to, give out laced candy or treats to kids on the street corner. Comparing to marijuana, comparing marijuana to adult entertainment is adding to that stigma that I spoke about earlier. We have one chance to do this and do it right. Change is scary for everybody, but you have to, and I'm asking you to check your stigma. If you're, if you're unfamiliar with marijuana, and so be it. However, um, I'm willing to keep an open mind. Counselor Sund tonight informed me that through his religion, I was formed out of a rib, and I like to keep an open mind about that. Do I believe that I was formed out of a rib? No, but I respect his opinion and his belief in that system. So, I just want to bring everything back to facts. And I don't have experience in his religion, so I'm going to take in, in honor and respect his words from that situation that he, in that experience that he has. But I have experience with marijuana as not this negative thing that those who are trying to say that they're not going to vote for this if we don't move it forward. So, what are we going to do? Hide it in the pocket of the town and say, "There, we did it, but we're ashamed that we did it." If we're going to debate, let's do it on fact. And if you don't have the facts, then I ask you to respectfully refer to somebody who does.
Okay, and I guess I'll just state again is that I'm all for this as long as it says schools. The church piece is the only piece that I want out of there. And I know that we have one place that's near a church, but to my knowledge, that place has not come forward. They have not come back in forever. So, we are really basing all this stuff out of fear about one place that we think that is going to happen. I too want to just stick to that and not bring up the entertainment license and the cigarette and the alcohol and why. We know that, and it's already set in stone, so we don't need to discuss that. But Counselor Wheeler and I were both at the Planning Board, and this is not just, um, Commissioner DeSorge's idea. She actually did lots of research and showed it. I think what would have been better, um, for the council tonight to hear is if there's that much information that all these towns are also struggling with this, and they all added churches back in, that would have been better information. Because all the information that I heard the night that I went to the Planning Board were all these towns that put it forward, I believe East Hampton, and I can't remember the other two right away. They, um, did not use the word church in theirs. So, I feel like to balance this out and to help everybody make a really well-informed, um, decision like they did at Planning Board, it probably would have been better, or it would have been helpful to hear the places that said, "Yes, um, we're going to put church in here, and this is how we're going to do it, and we're going to take the vote." And I didn't hear any of that today, nor did I see it. But I did hear it at that meeting, and I wanted to go because I really wanted to be prepared for tonight. So, I went to those meetings intentionally so I could hear how it all played out. Because I wasn't sure how I was going to feel about any of it. And, um, it was really educational, and it made me get on a couple websites that kick information to me, like, almost on a daily basis of things that are happening in Massachusetts. And the church thing was something that was not coming up. But that was because I did learn at the Planning Board thing that too many regulations could make a business potentially sue. Would they do it, or would they just move along? Remember, we're surrounded by towns that are looking at that 3% and they want to take it in a heartbeat. So, we could lose this like this anyway, um, because they could move on. So, I just don't want to send up any more boundaries. I know one thing they talked about at the Planning Board was, um, sort of along the lines of Counselor Sund, where he said, you know, he didn't want people standing out there, you know, passing out laced candy. Well, first of all, if that's going to happen, it would be happening now. Was that it wasn't going to be some building on Main Street with a great big joint on the top of it and, you know, things like that. Like, we have to take all those worst scenarios out of our head. You look at the Legion right now and the medical marijuana, and it looks just the same. I took a tour of that place. I saw everything. And if you think it's easy-peasy to just walk in, it is not. Many of us here went to the meeting about, um, a recreational marijuana place that wants to open near, um, 99. And they showed what the building would look like. I just feel like there's so much information that's really missing here. That these things do not look like these big storefronts with, you know, bongs in the window and stuff like that, which actually has happened around Greenfield. And that we had to discuss it and try to get them to not have them in the window, because we just felt like, did we really want that? You know, just downtown in general. And, um, I just remember all the battles that we've had just about that and about the tobacco and everything else. So, I guess this thing is just pretty surprising to me to even bring this up. I, I just feel like I'd go for it if we could take the church piece out and leave it schools, because I don't know of any place near a school someone would be able to put a retail store. Because at the end of the day, it still has to be a store. It's going to sell recreational marijuana. Stores cannot go anywhere. So, that's the other thing that I'm not sure why we keep saying, but they can go wherever they want. If anything about the state, we know things can't just go where they want. It's, it, our process is never easy. And so, the places are pretty limited where it could be. So, I just feel like, um, let's, let's just work on this if we can. I, you know, I'm so close to wanting to table this, but July 1st is so quick. And the only reason I'd want to table it is to get more information about towns that really did put the church thing in, so we have a balance. You know, I see the towns that said no to it after they had long debates. I'd just like to see if there is another side. So, I really want us to stop the process, but tonight may kill getting some real facts here, and none of us have brought it, so.
Counselor Alice?
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, correct the record. I spoke about a conversation that I had with one of my constituents, Ginny, and she texted me. She said that I misrepresented the conversation. I did not do that intentionally. I was, I was speaking from what I recalled we talked about. So, I wanted to, on the record, say that, uh, my recollection of that conversation is not what she remembers it being. So, please disregard anything that I spoke about, about speaking with, with Ginny. I'm not, I'm not trying to make light of it. I, 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 I truly, honestly, thought that I was representing the conversation that we had, and it was not. So, please, uh, I, I apologize to Ginny for that. I absolutely do. It was, um, not something that I was doing because I wanted to put words in her mouth at all. I thought I was representing our conversation. So, I, I know she's watching, and I do, uh, very much apologize for that. So, please, I, I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think we've ta, uh, Counselor Mass?
Thank you. Thank, thank you, President Reno. Just want to clarify a couple of things. I haven't proposed that we should be changing the zone up to Home Depot, the Home Depot or the, or West Commercial Zone. This is set for the Central Commercial Zone. My amendment does not change that. I haven't suggested an increased buffer zone. Um, I, I do agree that there's a difference between an exclusion and notice and opportunity to be heard. It certainly is. But that notice and opportunity to be heard is for a much larger buffer, buffer zone of 300 feet. And most of the communities that I have been dealing with, including Melrose, Wolfam, all, I, I wish I could list all of them that I could remember off the top of my head, are including houses of worship, not churches, because house of worship is the term that you use in zoning, and, um, a 500-foot buffer zone. They're, they're much more conservative than we are. When we're talking about facts, there are five churches in the Central Commercial Zone, two of which are on Federal Street directly across from each other. So, that's essentially having one church because of how the, the 100 meter would work. There's one on the north end, um, next to, um, next to the YMCA building, which is also a place where there are a lot of young people. There is, um, there, there is a storefront, um, church on South Central Main Street, pretty clo, pretty close to being directly across from the, one of the oldest religious institutions in Franklin County, which is the Holy Trinity Church. With a 100-foot buffer, I don't have a map or build-out analysis, but I can tell you just by looking at it, with a hot 100-foot bu, buffer, that leaves hundreds of locations where a marijuana retail establishment could open in downtown. I have absolutely no doubt that this kind of, um, this kind of buffer zone not only would survive a challenge, but, but would not even be challenged. I am not trying to stigmatize marijuana by suggesting that it's like adult entertainment. My reference to adult entertainment is by way of analogy of explaining how the challenges to over-restriction of zoning makes it unconstitutional and illegal. That is the most recent, um, that's the most recent debate we had related to, um, that, um, that issue. And, and those who remember 1998 will remember that I was advocating for less restriction related to the old adult entertainment, um, zoning bylaw. And so, it, I'm, I'm very confident in this, and we will have a public hearing, and we will have an opportunity, um, to, to get more information on the record. But what we can't do, if we make, if we get the information and we find that the vast majority of communities are including churches and are including larger buffer zones, which isn't even what I'm asking for, that is a substantive change if we do it after today, and, and that will draw a lawsuit. If we do a substantive change in the other direction, the developer is not, a developer is not going to sue us by making it easier to open up. So, I am asking this body, I, I think it's clear that there's a minor, at least a strong minority on the council that really can't support something that doesn't have buffer zones in it. I'm asking us to start as restrictive as we can. And if, if we want to make changes down the road, we can become less restrictive, um, without picking up a challenge. If we try to go the other way, we could pick up a challenge, or we could be in a position where we have no ordinance. And the state law is very clear on this. It can go anywhere, including into a residential zone.
Okay, so, um, I think we're about ready to vote on the amendment. So, this is going to be the vote on the amendment, which is, "Be it moved that the proposed ordinance be amended by an E4 striking the word kindergarten or any grades 1 through 12 and replacing with the words preschool through and including college or any pre-existing house of worship." So, if you vote yes, you are voting yes on this amendment, um, and I think this should be a roll-call vote.
Yes.
I'm going to abstain.
No.
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 Yes.
The, uh, the amendment fails. So, now we're going back to the regular motion, which would be to initiate, um, excuse me while I leaf back. So, just that we're clear, we're going to initiate, um, the zoning on this, so, without the amendment. So, it would be that the Town Council of Green, Greenfield hereby initiate the following proposed zoning ordinance amendment relative to marijuana establishments. And so, that's, so we're, we're voting to initiate the process now. Um, and so, we're going to do another roll-call vote.
Counselor Sund?
I want to put up the debate.
Sure, I'm sorry, I should have, I should have offered debate on that motion. Is what you're going, is that what you're going to ask?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm not voting for.
Yes, that's a good. No, good question, Counselor Sund. I skipped over the entire opportunity to debate, so that's, that's bad on me. So, this is voting on the original, the original zoning ordinance that's going to be started by the planning board, which would not include the houses of worship within, within the buffer zone. So, but let's debate it so that it'll become clearer. Again, I apologize about that. Counselor Mass?
Just want to talk about procedure just a little bit. It requires a majority to initiate, but it requires two-thirds to pass. And I want to remind counselors how zoning, zoning is very, very rigid as far as state law goes, and should we vote to initiate, but then ultimately vote no on the ordinance because we don't have two-thirds, or even if a majority votes yes, but we don't have the two-thirds, under state law, we cannot take up this measure or substantially the same measure for two years. So, given that there was some conversation that there were some counselors who'd like to see more information, while we have a little jeopardy of going past the July 1 deadline if we don't act quickly, I think there's much more jeopardy in being in a position where we can't take this matter up for two years. So, I'm going to, I'm going to vote no and try to bring more information to the table. I'm going to ask others to do the same.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yeah, I, I think I would like all the councils just to vote yes so that we can get more information and that we can discuss it. So, I just think that we're going to have a public hearing, and people will do their research. That's what they, you know, they're putting this forward. So, I think if people are going to put things forward like this to get as much information, and like I said, I was not sure about this at all, which led me to go to additional meetings, which is not something I strive to do, just because I really needed to learn it, and I really need to keep researching and reading on it. So, I'd like people to vote yes, and, and hopefully Counselor Mass and anyone else that finds information, that can send it to the town clerk and get it to all of us, at least throughout the process, we'll be learning and getting that information.
Counselor Leonovich?
Just to clarify, if we vote yes on this and we initiate the process, no substantive changes can be made to this at all. If we find new information, or we get any other information, we cannot make, make changes to this ordinance as it stands, correct?
That's correct, and it, it starts the clock. The clock starts ticking at that point. Are there any other, any other que, um, does everybody understand? I think everybody understands what we're voting on now. All right, so, yes means you want to initiate the zoning ordinance for marijuana establishments. No means you don't want to initiate this, and abstain means you don't want to vote. So, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Sund?
No.
Counselor Lovett?
No.
Counselor Ellis?
I'll abstain.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Vionnet?
No.
Counselor
Okay, so, the motion passes, and the zoning amendment is hereby initiated. I'm going to vote yes, just to keep us safe. Okay, we're getting to the end here. Presentation of petitions and similar papers. Report of committees? Unfinished business? Old business? Yes. Did the Ways and Means take it up?
We didn't.
Okay.
We wouldn't be already voted in. Actually, I'd rather Ways and Means go.
I'm sorry, it did not, it's not going to come, it's, it'll be coming up in a week, next Wednesday, next Wednesday. So, we promise it will definitely come up then, but we're not prepared to vote on it New business? Counselor Mass?
I asked for unanimous consent to dedicate the minutes in the memory of former Precinct Five Town Counselor Raymond Vias.
Second.
Okay. Does anyone want discussion? Do you want to say anything, Counselor Mass?
Counselor Vias was a counselor from Precinct Five on the 27-member council, always a very friendly and thoughtful counselor who worked with colleagues of all ideological orientations. He'll be missed.
Okay, all in favor of dedicating the, the meeting minutes in, in memory of former Precinct Five Counselor Raymond Vias? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. We already went through executive session. Hang on one second. Okay, motion to adjourn. Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield, call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield, visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield, you can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave, call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solastoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.